All right, good evening. Here by open Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, May 20th at 6:01 PM. Could we please meet, please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please note that this meeting is being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television. We would like to introduce for the first meeting to my left, Mitroux City, welcome.
Thank you for the wood. Appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna jump right in. Did anybody have a chance to take a good look? Those 3:25, 19 minutes were extended. Would you like to make a motion? Or would you like to hold them?
I was appointed in this, right? So somebody else should probably...
Okay, if that's the case, then I think I might hold them for another meeting, because Leah's not here yet.
All right. We can do that.
And Mitch can't vote. Okay. Can I get a motion assigned, Treasury? We're at 24 and payroll.
So move second.
Comments?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Great. We are just gonna move right along. Public comment? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. You're over the looking, but I'm over. Can I give you the look?
That's right.
I have a gavel. I just didn't take it out.
Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here to address a few things. I happen to notice today when I... Don't forget my phone for a second. When I was coming up to the center of town, just a comment, I took a picture. You guys see it? I was here a year ago when a resident of our community who has had volunteered her services for a number of years came before this board and asked for some help. And the then superintendent of public rec, oh yes, we'll take care of that. And the board all smiled, and yes, we'll take care of that. And here we are, a year later, and that island at Maple Ave and Main Street is as bad as it was when Mrs. Stetson came before you. To say that I'm disappointed would be an understatement. I hope in the... I don't know if that comes under the $15,000 to beautify the town, or if that because it's state won't come under that, but I would hope that you made a commitment to her. I mentioned it the other day to her, and she was somewhat disappointed, but she can speak for herself if she chooses to come up here. My second item that I'd like to talk about. I'm an old US history teacher and government teacher. Been retired from the classroom since 1988, so I probably forgot a lot of stuff. I'm old, and my mind's starting to go on me. But I believe our revolution, we broke away from King George III back during the revolution under the slogan of taxation without representation is tyranny. Yet I watched tyranny happen the other night at our town meeting with this new enterprise program, when the people who only, only, only use water in the town of Rutland are now bunched in with myself, who's a sewer and water user, because you've combined the two. And now they're forced to pay that kind of money. I think that's wrong. I think it's unconstitutional, and I believe it's against everything this country was founded on. Taxation without representation is tyranny. And I believe we committed tyranny the other night. Maybe it wasn't the intention to commit tyranny, but go back and study your US history, take a look at why we fought what we fought for. If you're gonna talk that way, that everybody... How many times have I gotten up at a town meeting when it came time to vote on water and sewers and said, "Only us water and sewer people should be voting on..." And I'm told, "Oh, no, 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 everybody has to vote." Because if there's a liability issue... Well, if you're forcing the water people to pay for sewage, shouldn't everybody else in town be paying that bill too? Under the... Under that definition of if we're... If there's a response... I'm sure you don't want to do that. You'd have an uprising in this town. I don't understand why you just can't pluck out from the enterprise program and just have those people pay that percentage, which is water. The third thing I'd like to speak about is the town meeting the other night, and how upset I was at that town meeting. I didn't... On the biggest vote that we were taking, on the reason that probably 700 of the 742 people were there, had to do with that bylaw. And the way we proceeded into that, and the way we confused people with vote was beyond my belief. And here we have this high-powered attorney from Copeland and Page of Boston, who I think did us a big disservice by allowing things to take place. I've already visited the AG's office. She's given me some good advice and told me where to go from there. Jod it down, though, AGs. So, when we... When the town moderator asked on a two-thirds vote to be allowed to... To be allowed to determine without a count, I thought it had to do with moving the question. But then, when we moved the question and we went to vote, in fact, one of the few times that I did get up to speak, because I usually speak more at town meetings than I didn't the other night, I get up to speak over the fact, or I yelled from where I was sitting. We can't be taking a voice vote on that, clearly, unless it's unanimous. Unless it's unanimous. How do I know that? I know it because I read it in this book called Town Meeting Time, and that's what our moderator goes by. So this is the Bible. And I know it from, I think it was June 15th, 1992, when as moderator over at Naquad, I failed to take the count. I failed to take the count on the biggest vote taken in the town at that time for a $9 million project. Okay? So I know from personal experience. It was one of the great humiliations of my life. I made a mistake, but I hurt people. And I think a mistake was made the other night. I think people were confused. I consider myself somewhat savvy at what was going on, and I was confused what we were doing. Clearly talks about... Clearly says, under the guidelines that we have, a term... When you're dealing with the money issues, a two-thirds vote is required, a count must be taken and recorded, unless the vote is unanimous. Now, there's ways around that. If you have 700 people and two or three people say no, you don't have to get up and have an official count. What you can do, under the rules, is have the first... Have the nays go first, so two or three, and then count enough yeses. You don't have to count everybody, to get to the quorum, and definitely two-thirds. You don't have to count everybody. But not the other night. Everybody had to be counted. So there was a lot of confusion. Now, I was concerned about the count that took place the other night, because it was counted differently in different sections. In one section down front, they had people stand. Up in the... Up in the bleachers where I was, no one stood. So there's people at the end of the row, and there was a young woman helping the guy on my side, I can't remember who it was, and she's like this, looking way down the row. In the biggest vote we're gonna take. So when it ended, and I went up and questioned, how many voters? 742. How many yeses? They told me. How many no's? What do we... What do we... What was the deciding number? 13. Out of 742 votes, 13. So I called for division, clearly. And I was blown off. And here we have this high-powered attorney sitting there, giving instructions, okay? The voters... If a vote is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, I doubt it. I doubt the vote. Recount, okay? Questions along that line. And I had six other people. Six other people, and I made seven. Okay? Then the moderator has to address that. And you can divide the house. There's ways you can do it. One way is to send all the no's or all the yeses out of the room to another room and count separately. Another is to divide and move everybody, all the yeses on one side, all the no's on one side, so you have a better way of counting. Our third way is to have people stand. Not everybody stood. 13 out of 742. I won my first election for selectmen out of hundreds of votes by nine. A recount came, and I wound up winning by three, because a recount was declared and the person had the right to do that. I asked for a recount, and it was denied. Okay? I'm not here because the side that I was on lost. I would hope I would have the courage to be here if the side I was on won. It's a matter of principle. We did not do it right. I know from June 15th, 1992, I didn't do it right. And I have tried to do, take votes right since then. And we didn't do it right. So if we let it happen two weeks ago, what happens next year? What happens at the next meeting? What happens then? We gonna just fluff a rate? I'll tell you this. If Paul Cranston was still our attorney, and he was sitting in the audience, or sitting off the table with you, him, a town moderator, when that vote was challenged, he would have said to Randy, "You have to deal with the challenge." I don't wanna have to go and push this any further. And I'm mulling that around in my mind. I talked with the Attorney General's office. She's given me direction. My next stop, if I plan to do it, would be the Superior Court of Worcester, and go there and talk to them. I don't wanna cause the town of Rutland any financial burden. But right is right. Right is right. And that's a decision I'm gonna have to make. I thank you for your time, and you people have a wonderful evening. Go ahead, I'm standing.
Okay. So just to address the three separate concerns, and I'll take them out of order. I guess the first thing, and as you know well, that wasn't our meeting, so I wouldn't want the Board of Selectmen to make a comment on the running of town meeting, which is not our purview. We sit there, we present information as it's been prepared, Finance Committee presents the financial information, but relative to the running of the meeting, it is not our meeting. Obviously, our town clerk is here tonight. She was prepared for a ballot vote. It certainly had been discussed. We know there was a motion for a ballot that failed overwhelmingly, which was maybe a little surprising to some people.
Well, you know why. I mean, come on. You know why.
I have...
Everybody was gonna have to leave the room and be checked back in. 742 people. What have that... What would that have taken? Estimate, an hour?
I... Yeah, I mean, I...
Thank you. So that's why.
But that was at the discretion of the moderator, which is why I just... So it would be very...
But you hired the attorney, and the attorney's job is to guide the moderator. And she did not guide the moderator. That is your appointment. You appointed KP and Paige. You appointed him. That's your attorney, working for the moderator that night, surely. But you can't walk away from this, the Board of Selectmen, because that's the attorney you chose to be at that meeting. That's all.
I'll speak for myself. I was very confident in our legal representation that night. That is the managing partner of KP. I don't know that we could do much better. All right, so that's the first thing. I see where you're headed. Obviously, that night, we knew, you know, you made a statement. We heard division of the House, which did not get addressed. So, I mean, I don't think any of us is surprised that you were here expressing these concerns again, and hopefully all the questions will get answered. I'm gonna move on to your first item, which was the island at the corner of Maple and Main. I completely agree with you. It's unbelievably disappointing to drive by that thing every single day. I think we have an update. We have a thumbs up.
I got it.
Okay.
I get it done.
That's terrific. But my point is, it should have been done a year ago when she was promised.
I 100% agree with you.
And four of you are still here.
Once in a while.
This has nothing to do with him. He's new.
Nope, absolutely not.
The four of you are guilty.
Absolutely agree with you.
I gladly advocate responsibility for this issue.
Well, you're a gentleman to do that, but you'll learn.
Number three. Number three. So you have a couple of options. I can try to answer this high level, or if you would like to wait around, it's under old business, and I expect it to be a somewhat extended conversation.
Go ahead.
For water sewer.
Go ahead.
You want the high level? Okay. So, we have steps that we need to take at this point, now that the water sewer enterprise accounts have been voted to be combined. But I wanted to clarify a couple of things. The water users are going to be... Continue to be billed with no change at the water rates, and the sewer users at sewer rates, regardless of where the retained earnings are going and the fund itself. The users are being still billed appropriately and separately. There are no water users being billed for sewer. However, the question that came up, and it is a valid question, was retained earnings. When we had a pile of retained earnings in sewer side of things, and again, when they were separated enterprise funds, we used those for a capital improvement project back in 2017. We assigned $325,000 to that. In retrospect, should we have borrowed instead for that and left that money sitting there in anticipation of extraordinary bills? Yep. Yep. Hindsight 2020, we absolutely should have. We didn't. We have done the same thing with water. We have a large amount of money that was sitting in the water, retained earnings, separated enterprise fund, that for nine years, we had been saving up in order to do a sizable capital project. It was nearing $1 million, and it still wasn't gonna cover this project. It won't. When this happened in the past two years, and I'll clarify this as well, because something... And I'll take the blame for this, was mis-said at a meeting where two years, not including this one, so this makes three. For the past two years, we have had to go to Fall Town Meeting and appropriate sewer funds. And somebody thought, to your point, because you brought it up, do the regular taxpayers help to pay for these bills? We have not had to do that. Thank God we haven't. If we didn't take some of these actions, we might have. And I agree with you. That would be an uprising waiting to happen. So, for the past two years, we have had to go to Fall Town Meeting and appropriate sewer funds from articles, from old articles, from free cash, in order to pay extraordinary bills that we thought were extraordinary. And in fact, they weren't. It's become clearly a pattern. This year, it's hit us harder than ever. Certainly, Mr. Buckley can speak to this a lot better than I can. And so the decision was made that, so that we don't have to see our rate payers, and for the most part, they are, like you, water and sewer users, see an astronomical increase in rates immediately in order to cover this bill, 220%, that we would take savings in order to deal with a portion of it. So now, back to the 100 water users, because I agree with you. It's a question that has to be answered. These are water rate payers whose retained earnings were being set aside for a water capital project. And what has been discussed with our... With Weston Sampson, with the Abrams Group, who was consulting on this, was that as part of the new sewer rate structure, we need to look at this as a borrowing of that money and ensure that as the monies are replenished back into the enterprise fund and retained earnings become healthier again, that we make sure we reassign some of those monies specifically. And it's an accounting thing. It's not gonna look like anything different. It'll still be that one enterprise fund. But from an accounting's perspective, if you were to come in and say, "I wanna see the breakdown of this enterprise fund and where all the money goes," it will specifically say that as part of the sewer billing, the money that was borrowed, borrowed from those 100 water users will get replenished. We need to work those numbers out, and that hasn't been done yet. But I don't know if that answers everything, but...
It's an excellent answer. Thank you very much. I feel much better. And I feel better over the fact that the rate of the water users is gonna maintain itself as it was before, because the other night, as I was listening to the debate, the young woman who got up, and I believe Mr. Sullivan also got up and spoke to this issue, from where I was sitting and for the people around me, it sounded like the water users were gonna be paying a higher rate, and incorporated into that higher rate was dealing with sewage. And I'm glad you clarified that for me, because the other night at the meeting, it was far from that clear. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, public comment. Actually, Mr. Buckley. You probably need to stand somewhere.
Yeah, I'll stay right here. Oh, him. Just a couple of clarifications on the...
Oh, thank you.
There was a state sign, state roadway sign that had to be moved. That has been moved. Well, we did look at the alignment. When I say alignment, where cars can go around the island and get out safely and get in and out safely. A couple of things we've decided at DPW, we may wanna do, try and limit some of the parking at the end of Maple, because what happens is, when larger vehicles or trucks try to make that turn, they destroy the island. So we'd like to protect whatever work we get done there. So we're gonna be looking at some striping. So it's more complicated than just making it look nice. It's more of an alignment issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Water and sewer, is that now, or...
No, it's under old business. Is that...
Oh, wait.
You'll wait. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
No, I found the line further on this piece of paper.
Okay.
Then Dick Williams, over there. I happen to hear, and of course, I am not on Facebook, and I don't get any papers. Did you, the Select Board, allow money to be spent on a motorcycle instead of a lit-up crosswalk sign on Main Street for the protection of Deveraux kids? I've heard there's a motorcycle that the police department had purchased, or whatever.
So it's... And Chief Monaco's not here. He would have a more complete story, but it's a one-year lease. They used a portion of the $40,000 that Deveraux gifts us every year, and as you know, that's gone up over the years. It used to be 10 and then 12 for a while. For several years now, it's been hovering around 40, which doesn't fully fund an officer with all of the, you know, associated costs, but it helps. And that's primarily what he uses it for, to help offset things like overtime and wages. But in order to allow for some traffic patrol, it was something he wanted to try. We certainly had conversations in the past with Deveraux about them funding a car. And it was as those numbers were getting discussed. And, you know, part of it is, we always know every year that this is a gift. This isn't a pilot. They are nonprofit. They don't pay taxes. So it's a gift that at any time, they could turn and say, "We're really sorry. This is something we can't do this year." Which is, I think, why he made it a one-year lease, kind of a no strings attached, just to give it a try. Something to try to give some diversity to the department's fleet and allow for maybe a little bit better flexibility when it comes to traffic control. I think they're looking forward to using it for 4th of July in particular, and we have an officer that's currently training right now to be able to ride it appropriately.
But do you see where I'm coming from about having a crosswalk sign that you push a button and it lights up? And, I mean, how many years have we been waiting for MassDOT to come in here and take care of this, or help us out, or anything else? And putting a cone up or whatever, it just does not cut it, in my book. There've been too many close incidents in that area, and I feel that it would have been money well-spent in a different direction. And here comes another one, too. What's going on with Select Board? We now have another expense, a communication car. Stop this now. We have debt that needs to be paid, and we have no recreation for the younger people of this town, or whatever happened to the skateboard park that we're gonna... Oh, we're taking this down, but in a year or two, we'll put up another one, or whatever, and nothing ever happened. We don't have a decent packing lot, or this... To me, money could be spent more wisely than something like that. And I know that you've got X number of towns in here, and you might expand it, for what reason, I don't know. I say give it all to the state police and let them take care of it, but that's my opinion.
So just to respond, and Chief Knife is here, he can respond as well, in regards to the Rutland Regional Emergency Truck that you're seeing. That is the old fire chief's car. The fire chief obtained a grant in order to replace his. They then went and had the restriping done. With the addition of Warren, our director of the rec is doing quite a bit of travel, and some of it is to locations that require that four-wheel drive because of where the towers are. And as you know, and so the car, relative to the rec, the discussion was that we would blue-book it, and all of the communities that are part of rec would pay into that blue-book value, and essentially pay back the town for the value of the car. So to your point about money expended, right? We're not gifting it to the five-town rec. And then, moving forward, that will be worked into the rec's budget. So Rutland's portion of maintaining that car is our percentage portion in the same way it is everything else in direct cost.
But still, Rutland has a proportion which will keep on increasing as...
Rutland absolutely has a portion of maintaining that car, just like everything else, yeah. I mean, portion of Mike's salary, yeah.
Yeah. So, are we ahead of the game, or are we still starting to slip?
The car has come up before. I think you've been in meetings where we had, I think, we might go at least one, if not two, directors back who were asking for a car, and we always said, "Ah, no." I think maybe Harry has heard about this in the past, too. Because of the scenario that happened, the condition of Chief Knife's car, it seemed like a really good time to do it at very little cost to the town in terms of an initial outlay. And, you know, we have other communities that were looking at extensive savings when Warren came on. And we need to frame this with, when your system is growing, and we are not a district yet, that the savings is spread out over additional costs as well, right? Because we're hiring more people, and the car was one of those things. It's smaller in the grand scheme of the budget of rec, but, yeah, I mean, every little bit. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think you... I'm not sure if this was... Did you have a response to Louis to that in particular? I don't know if Dick has done, though.
Actually, if I can, Dick, can I address your... About the motorcycle one comment? If I may? Sean Moore at 3 Edson Avenue. Why wasn't the money that was appropriate, the $15,000 to pay off for the lease? How come that money wasn't taken for the money to go for the police, for that motorcycle, instead to go for that...
So the police chief has discretion as far as where that money goes, to a point? It was an appropriate level of discretion, and he...
Wasn't the... Wasn't the $15 for the lease, the money for the lease for the police vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
The town's paying for that, am I right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, what kind of discretion says, "I get this grant money to go out and buy a motorcycle that a small little town really doesn't need," instead to ask the taxpayers to go ahead and pay for this vehicle, which I would think that that grant money would be like, "Hey, let's use that for something worthwhile, like paying off this lease." I just think, I agree with Dick, it was a frivolous expense.
Thank you.
May I... I think...
Okay. Go ahead.
I think I'm only gonna... I'm gonna skip a little bit here, because I'm not... I gotta get out of this. How many years have I come to you and asked, "Can we have a certified road listing?" And I am pushing the Select Board to go through the town clerk to get this done, because over the years, we've been trying to push it, and to have a certified road list done, so that we don't end up with another Glenwood Place or any other roads that might not be listed, and we'll town have to accept it, you know? We need it. Let's just put it that way. I'm just getting a little beyond...
No, no.
...up in its time.
Was a Galley Carrick who were working on that right before you left?
We're working on a list of recognized, non-public ways that are maintained, right? There were 30 of them.
Sounds like something to go on a goals and objectives list.
I think I talked about that today. It's not as easy as it sounds.
Yeah. I think it starts out easy, and then you get to that last 15, 20%, and it's gonna get very challenging.
Yeah, you have to go through all the old deeds and everything.
You have to go through deeds, because we've gone back into the, you know, like, early 1800s, so...
Makes me wonder if it's an internship-type project.
Margaret and I explored that.
Oh.
Margaret and I explored that, and they didn't wanna...
They didn't wanna?
Yeah, I think she talked to Worcester State and Clark, but it's something we probably should...
Try again.
And, and my concern is more the length of the road, like, of the road, and where it ends, like that, 'cause we basically went back, is that our, I'm taking over, we should be discussing this at another time?
Oh, no, that's, I mean, I, I think this is an excellent thing to add, and the goals and objectives are on our list for a lot of people, and for the board as a whole, so, yeah, bring them on.
'Cause one of the first things I did when I first started, and I was part-time in, like, two thousand and three or four, was go through, and, and all the records, and I get back to eighteen ninety-six, and that's when the town named all the roads in town. So, we've used that date as, set those accepted roads, but I've only been able to, and we haven't had time to go back to the project, to go back and actually see the date and, and the length of those roads.
So what's the appropriate group of people to do this project?
It would be somebody that would, would be able to do a lot of deed research.
Okay.
I mean, most of the roads, we know, I have an accepted date, we could certify most of them. The other problem that I've had over the years is, just because something showed up on a Chapter Ninety list, doesn't mean that I can find an accepted date, so...
Right.
So, thank you, I appreciate you, looking forward to moving into that.
Is that really it? You said you had three pages?
No, I, and, uh, the one thing I was gonna bring up, I had a whole list for, for Joe, but, uh, no, well, I'll talk to him personally about some of the stuff, but the one thing that I do wanna bring up in front of you is the fact that Rutland has an awful lot of old trees. And the old trees is, you know, you like to keep them and all that, they're dying out fast. We have not had a hurricane in this town for twenty-five-plus years, all these young kids don't know what a hurricane is, and I'm concerned about mostly where the power feed comes in, from Treasure Valley, Central Tree, or Route sixty-eight, fifty-six that comes into the center of town, is the basic three ways that power comes into this town. And, uh, you drive, just drive and take a look at some of these old trees that are hanging over the wires and everything else, what's it gonna take? And I don't want a nice storm situation where we run out of electricity for a month, a week, I don't care, even a day, for crying out loud. I, I, I feel that we have too many old trees, and we need to start thinking very seriously how to take care of them. And not only that, I'm sorry to say, but the, the forest truck that they have, the people that run it are not, also cannot get near power lines, 'cause they have not, to the best of my knowledge, gone to class for it. And if I'm wrong, I would like to be updated on that. And thank you.
I don't, I don't know how it works, if I may, but I know National Grid goes through and does a lot of clearings for the coverage along the power lines, but I don't know...
You'll, you'll see them cut out holes in the trees.
Right.
They don't take the trees down, and actually, sometimes they'll weaken it even more, so...
Can I ask, Dick? I mean, your request just now is sort of the opposite of what the majority of Massachusetts' established communities do. They work really hard to protect the trees and not cut them down.
Well, now, you go through some of these other towns that have municipal lights, and they do seriously push them back, push these trees back. And I feel that, uh, we may, um, be paying the price someday, and heaven only knows the way the weather's been lately, and things are changing, so, be on guard.
I wanna circle back to one thing, and I don't know if Joe Buckley wants to speak to it, or you can do it during your updates, the parking lot had come up, is that what you were talking about, right here? Our pit in the ground? Or just generally?
I, I was just general, the, how the condition at the town hall, that parking lot is, is...
Yeah.
And how many years have you been headed on or gonna work on it, and never have?
Okay.
But this one here, I do believe, he had mentioned he was looking for a state contractor, you know, for the job, I believe, or something like that.
So you would remember, but one of the agreements in the DEP decision regarding soil importation was in-kind labor...
Correct.
...to assist with that particular parking lot.
Correct.
And so Joe needs to get up to speed on that before we start using any other monies, because there's actually article monies as well left over that he can put into it, but we just wanna make sure we can get that. And it's sounding, and I don't wanna speak for you, but sounding like DEP really wants the in-kind work and not the cash value, whereas I think if anybody asked me, which they didn't, I would've happily taken the cash and let Joe find the contractor, but...
But they have equipment that they could move in here to help with it, and that's...
Clearly, they do, yeah. Okay.
So, yeah.
All right.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Myself and, uh, Mike Nicholson, and Seth, and the chief of police, and sometimes the planner, have recently formed a traffic and parking committee to address park, mostly parking issues around town as they come up. We don't meet that often, we recently just got started, so one of our tasks is trying to identify municipal parking.
Great.
So it's, it's on the radar, is my point, and that group is in place to deal with it.
Thank you.
All right. Um, back to the parking lot, just quick. Um, the town, the article money will probably have to be used to crush the spoils pile first, that actually is the first task...
Okay.
...before we manipulate the sup-, uh, SEP, the Supplemental Environmental Project that's written into the, um, document, the DEP, they were cited, that organization was cited, so we actually have to do our part first.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Um, back to the motorcycle, and, and, you know, I'm understanding, and I'm certainly hearing that there are people who, I think the word used was frivolous, um, I would wanna give, um, Chief Monaco a chance to address people's concerns. He had some pretty good statistics on why it was something worthwhile to try. Um, he's been a very good chief for us, and I, I, I don't know that any of us questioned his decision-making in that. Um, so I, I'd wanna give him a shot at that, maybe we'll have him come in and be a part of the agenda officially.
Uh, through the chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Now that Joe's here about that motorcycle issue?
Yeah.
Joe, do you have any inclination as to what portion of roads, or percentage in town are unpaved, or that cannot be traversed via the motorcycle? A guesstimate?
Tough call. I mean, you have, you have both, uh, public and private dirt roads?
Okay.
Or gravel roads?
Right.
And some of them are gravel on purpose, like Sassawanna and Britnall? Um, I don't, I don't, but one of the, we're, we're in the process of trying to assemble something just like them.
Okay, so we can find that out?
Nope.
Sorry, anyone else here for open session? No? Last call? Okay. Uh, department updates, um, you're up, you're up next. You could, you should've just come up and stayed there.
Is the chair ready?
Chair's ready.
All right. Um, welcome, Mitch. Uh, DPW update, um, street sweeping in town, on town roads is ongoing. We've got roughly forty percent of the town done. Um, we continue to put updates on both the town website and Facebook. Uh, I believe we're just finishing up in and around sixty-eight at this time. Um, repairs to the Turkey Hill Road culvert are complete, um, and long-term plans are ongoing, that road is open to through-traffic. We had a water main break recently on Prescott this weekend, was a six-inch, six-inch main, approximately thirteen feet was replaced. I'd estimate the pipeline was installed in the late sixties, early seventies. Um, the crew did a great job, they probably have water restored to most, anybody who lost water in roughly, I don't know, four or five hours.
They did do a great job, yeah, they did a good job.
Um, we have, uh, been back, uh, to doing lawn maintenance, or cutting grass at town facilities, that's up and running. Um, we're in the process, uh, we've restarted the Chapter Ninety discussions with the state, so we should have some plans for what we wanna do with roadways, probably in about two weeks. Um, we've also made contact with the state regarding complete street grant money, which is linked to some of the sidewalk repairs that are planned for the town. Um, streetlight changes are coming, um, the letter has gone to National Grid, and they're gonna start picking at that work, it'll probably take as much as six months to get completed, but in the long term, we should see significant savings on the lights. Um, some of the questions that came up earlier were linked to, uh, s- street inventory, roadway inventory, and, and I'd like to add a couple of things to that, like, um, water and sewer inventory, drainage, culverts, et cetera. A lot of that's, uh, what makes that possible for us to do that in a timely and effective proc-, uh, means is geographic information systems, or GIS. We're in the process of updating our GIS, we've got a quote, um, the town administrator has, has found funding for that, and I, I think answering quick questions like what you asked, um, how much is gravel, or what percentage is gravel, or where do you have sewers, where you don't, it's much easier to maintain it using GIS. It makes your record-keeping process and your ability to query data, um, much more effective, okay?
Right.
Um, and I think that's it for now, unless you have any direct questions of me.
Anyone? No? Uh, if you don't mind staying up, I'm gonna...
Yeah, there was, but just, um, in the agenda, there's, uh, the Turkey Hill...
Yeah.
...culvert, and that, there's a lot of moving parts that, if you wanna go over that.
Right, so I was actually going to run down, so the next thing on our agenda is the town administrator update, and a lot of the things were overlapping with you anyway, so...
Good, glad you're there.
Um, the Turkey Hill Road culvert was in poor shape, we applied for a grant to get that replaced, I think it's, um, through, it's EOEA, ultimately who provides those grant monies, uh, because it, it's to maintain habitat as well as replace the culvert. Um, we won't know if we qualify for that grant until after July. Um, the culvert began failing probably a month ago, and we prepared an estimate to replace it, and sent it to you folks, and we're gonna look at using reserve funds to get it done, but it failed prematurely, and we had no choice but to go in and excavate the road and put some pipe in there to keep it going. Um, I think we should still go forward with the grant, because the waterway itself starts in the town center, and actually, you know, ends up on Turkey Hill Road, it's a sizable watershed, it's a relatively complicated design, so hopefully, once the analysis is done, we'll proceed with a more formal design.
Great, thank you. Um, the other thing that was, um, on reserve fund transfer, I think you sent us, you sent to Mike, the, the estimate?
The estimate.
The Turkey Hill was how much?
Uh...
Seven?
The estimate in the reserve was six to seven thousand, I think, the interim repairs, because the road failed, basically, it wouldn't support traffic, so we had to use pipe we had on hand, so the number's actually a little bit less than that, it'll probably come in around forty-five hundred to five.
Oh.
That also included, um, a, um, a mutual aid pump we borrowed from the city of Worcester, so we could bypass the, the culvert to put in a new piece of pipe.
Great. Uh, and the last thing under the TA updates that affect you, or is regarding you, your department, is the mutual aid sign.
Yes, the town, the sign that's been in the town, town center was actually given to the town as for, for mutual aid, so, and what that means is, um, if Barry or Okam were to need to borrow that sign to tell someone the road is washed out, that sign has to go there, unless, of course, we have something more pressing. It's really not meant to be a formal announcement sign. We recently moved it down to Main Street to tell folks about water main flushing.
Great.
So, going forward, we've suggested that the town consider coming up with a, a more formal sign out front, not a temporary highway sign, and that if we have to use it, it should be really only used for town business.
If I may, I remember, I think before I was on the board, there was conversation with Margaret about using some solar, working with one of the solar companies to get a sign put in, similar to like, the one at Hol- in Holden, not necessarily, but like a...
Town billboard.
A town billboard, kind of like that, but I don't know, I know I had asked Mike about it, and he didn't know anything about it, and I think it just kind of maybe fell by the wayside. I know she was really going after, Dick, do you remember which solar company it was?
Yeah.
It didn't fall by the wayside.
It did not fall, they would not do it.
It was a hard, it was a hard no.
It was a...
It was a hard no. Okay, yeah. As part of the pilot discussions?
Yes.
It was, it was just not, yeah, yes.
Along that line, when I was involved in that discussion last year, I stopped on at the bank, and asked if they'd be interested in, in, uh, donating a sign of the center of town, and would say the bank on it, you know? And they said their, the, 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 the leadership of the bank doesn't get involved in that kinda stuff. I was hoping that maybe somebody would pay for it, some, you know, where they could get some advertising, but that was the only big, big group we had in town that I could think of, and that you know.
I think, I think we've, yeah, I think we've all been hoping that, that somehow the money would be found or gifted to us some way, and hearing the estimates from Holden on what that sign costs, and what the sign, similar sign costs at Mountview, which they worked into their construction project for Mountview, it's, I think, unfortunately, the town's gonna have to make a decision if there's free cash available to, to make a purchase like that, it'll have to be bid out, I mean...
What were the numbers, like roughly?
Forty-five thousand dollars, roughly, and I think that was for a small one, yeah. That was an installation.
One at Dentis is about thirty grand, and it's just...
Yeah.
And also, and also keep in mind, where are you gonna put it, so the people are not paying attention to the sign, but who's on the crosswalk?
Yeah.
You know what you should look into? Why don't you look into some town-wide fundraiser by the end of the summer, like an all-town picnic activity kinda thing, almost along the lines of the Chowder Fest kinda thing, where if you can draw enough paper, you might be able to make, if not, the whole forty-five or fifty thousand dollars put in the sign?
Yeah.
If you picked up a half or three-quarters of it, you're over the hump.
Our treasurer collector has called in.
I will just say that it does bring people into the town hall, and we have taxes due, um, water, sewer, exise, we put it on there all the time, and people do say, I saw it on the sign, that reminded me to pay it, so it's, it's, it's a tool that we are not gonna have now, so that's, that's not good. But by the way, water sewer builders do make thirty, so I'll get that out there this way, but...
I, I hate to say, but in the interim, we should probably just get a sandwich board that's big enough to, to at least give the bare minimum of your messages that goes in front of community health.
Yeah. Or, or do something with the old Lions Club Board, that's, that's really dangerous to, to even change, and really difficult, but...
Well, you can only see it one way, coming out of Maple Leaf, too.
Right, yeah, and so I think the other...
Okay.
They can make a, a, somebody writes signs like that.
When people come up with fireworks, go around with cups.
Are you volunteering?
There you go.
If you do it, I'll do it.
All right.
If the five of you will do it, I'll do it, I'll do it with you.
We would, we would need a gift account set up if we were actually gonna do that, a dedicated gift account, right? Becky?
That, yeah.
I don't think they're gonna be that happy, having...
If you wanna do it, I'll help you do it.
Nobody's gonna be that happy with me walking around with a bucket, I'm thinking, asking for cash, but I'll do it if you do.
They're strangers out of town, what do they know?
Fair enough.
The thousands come here.
Fair enough, good point.
Tax bills are town business.
Tax bills are town business.
And water and sewer bills are town business. Um, we get a lot of requests for, you know, soccer sign-ups, or baseball sign-ups, or pancake breakfasts, or, um, information sessions, and that kinda thing, but town business is town business. I, I think, long-term, though, you, you should make some better arrangements.
So, that's a separate discussion, sounds to me like we need to have a town-wide conversation with our active nonprofits about what their options are, you know, I, yeah.
And maybe it's worth it when Mr. Nicholson gets back to talk to Massachusetts Municipal, or someone at the state, to see if there's a contract available for communities, there may be a contract price you can manipulate already out there. I'm sure there's somebody else in the state besides Holden who's had to deal with it and has come up, there may be some more cost-effective stuff.
I would think so. All right, we, we haven't beaten this to death yet, right?
Is, is a solar sign more expensive than just a electric sign?
That technology's fairly new, you know, I, there's a, a, the four-year-old, uh, solar light up at Glenwood, and you, you barely know it was there. The effort was at the time to try to light that sign and be, make it visible from the road, it's really not, um, and I think it's, the technology has changed so much, so to your point, I don't know. I don't know if there's something that's, that's, I, you know, the battery-powered ones are not, uh, strong enough, I think you'd have to go to the next level, um...
Is there an easy way to find out?
Google? Yeah, we can, no, we can do some research.
Oh, okay.
I, I mean, I, it's clear we're going to have to do something, the question is when? We've certainly been talking about it, and people have, you know, we, we've had to push it off, you know, free cash is, is not free, and it's been in high demand, and this got pushed down in terms of, you know, triaging everything, it just hasn't been...
Plus then it was, uh, where does it go?
Where does it go? Yeah.
I have a thought, but I'd need to know the number, so if someone can come up with a, the most cost-effective number, and let me know what it is, I'd be willing to explore another option.
I don't think forty to fifty is an inappropriate number to work off of, I really don't, because you want a sign that is going to be accessible electronically, where somebody can be sitting at their computer and update it, um, the lighting is gonna be an issue, uh, I, I think that's about the right number.
Okay.
And where you wanna put it.
Yeah, different, that's, maybe that's all you, really. Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, not on this list, but does anyone, second call, have anything for Joe?
Nope.
Is he sticking around for water sewer, when we get to that? I assume so.
I was gonna leave.
I have a question for, for the director. Um, were you planning on doing any crack sealing this year?
Yes, I don't have an idea where we're going yet, though.
Okay.
We just, we literally made contact with Chapter, the folks who administer the Chapter Ninety at the state, like, Wednesday, so we don't, we don't have a good plan yet.
All right, I noticed sixty-eight is starting to crack again in places, and I'd like to see that road last as long as it can, so...
Fair enough.
And, uh, one other thing, uh, in the near future, there's a lot of traffic traveling And, uh, one other thing, uh, in the near future, there's a lot of traffic traveling, uh, Wachusett Street for bypass, they're trying to bypass Holden, and that road is really starting to fall apart.
It's actually on the top of our list.
Is that something you might go after a tip for, or can you?
No, we've got a lot tied up in tip with Palmacusset, in both design costs and, you know, administration. I, I think we'll probably try and tackle Wachusett in pieces, at least that piece that goes from sixty-eight to the town line. That's in really rough shape, um, that's actually at the top of our list.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna run through, uh, the board receipt of a memorandum from, um, our town administrator and several of these things have already been addressed, so I'll run through the rest quickly. For anticipated reserve fund transfers coming up on our final thirty days. And so you're looking at some of the larger requests that will be coming in, one from the fire department for June electric bills. Seth, did you need to speak to that at all, it's pretty self-explanatory, but.
Yeah, well, we just got May's bill in, um, this week, so we should have enough to cover that, it's just, we don't know what is, June's gonna.
Right. Right. Uh, and then we've talked extensively about the Turkey Hill work that needed to be done, that will be a reserve fund transfer. Uh, the budget did not have sufficient money to cover a repair of that size. Uh, and then there has been discussion by the town administrator, uh, he did broach the subject with the finance committee as well to get the board and the finance committee, um, some fairly affordable Chromebooks so that we can stop with all this paper, and so people can have better access to all of the documentation. If it's not something that this board wants to pursue, we should talk about that, uh, it was a lot of paper this year, a lot of paper.
Yeah, I like it.
Do we have a cost estimate as to the little paper, like, cost over the course of the year versus the problem?
No, that's a good question, let's do that.
It's good to hear.
Paper versus Chromebooks. Uh, town meeting room capacity, uh, came up as a question, I know this was addressed earlier. So prior to the meeting, it did come up for a discussion and Chief Nipe went, uh, over with our building commissioner, Will Castenelli, and had reviewed the certificate, the room was, uh, with a capacity of nine-hundred ninety-three, uh, as is noted on the public sign in the building. And I know as people were filing in and we were running thirty minutes late, you started kind of, we were counting, correct? Um, both through check-in, as well as you had additional staff come in?
Yep.
Okay. So I know there were concerns and I'm glad that at least the homework was done, but it was, we were getting close.
Um, the room wasn't properly utilized as far as space.
Okay.
The way the room was originally set up with the head table.
Right.
And chairs being that far back from the head table, all that space is vacant seats basically, where all the standing people could have sat if we had more chairs.
Yeah.
But the school doesn't have chairs, so, all the chairs that were there is what they have. So.
Which would have meant bringing in chairs from another location.
Right.
Yeah. Somebody else mentioned to me wanting to know why the board, the finance committee, the moderator weren't up on the stage, which would have opened up that front, and I suppose it's a valid question, we've never gone up there. I don't really know why, Anita, do you know why? No, we don't, we didn't at Aqab.
We haven't had a meeting that big there, so.
Right.
It would have been in the way of the screen.
Well, that's true, yeah.
It's a smaller stage, so I don't know that we could have all been straight across, but for a meeting that size, I think it's definitely a valid.
On, on that same subject, I had a conversation with the moderator the other day about thinking about having microphone runners. So have, you know, junior high kids have three microphones, have them, you know, going to people who are next in line so that they, you know, you don't have to climb over people, get up and speak, get some kids involved, and I think it would expedite the process. He seemed very receptive to that.
Great.
I like that.
It's interesting that the, the concerns and ideas that have come up from a meeting that size, which is relatively unheard of for us, right? When was our last one, Anita, that was that big?
Eighteen years ago.
Yeah, two thousand and three, one of those, the growth, yeah.
Thousand and three, right.
And then there was some really big school.
Yeah.
Ninety-two, there was a big, big one.
Ninety-two, yeah.
Back, a big, going on the school budget back when I was still teaching at Wachusett, so that was sometime in the eighties.
And that was all at Aqab.
That was at Aqab, yeah, we had big crowds there.
I heard from, from not that many people, but a few people that tried to park and then they just turned around and left, so that's an issue too.
Two or three people told.
A lot of people.
Yep.
I don't know where we go from there, but.
Wachusett.
People won't leave town to go to a meeting, they barely can get, well, never mind.
All right, thank you all for, that was a lot of, um, it takes a lot of input, so we like it. Uh, so just a general update on this list, uh, the board, uh, TA office, certainly anybody in this room, um, has been invited to attend the Wachusett area Chamber of Commerce annual meeting. Um, that is a dinner, I believe it's being held in Sterling. Uh, and it is forty dollars per person with an RSVP by May thirty-first, yep, it's at the Choxon Inn. FYI for everyone, uh, Mike will not be with us on Monday night meetings just in the month of June uh, because of a fast-track class that he's taking, which we knew about, and we just wanted to let everybody know. Um, he's obviously gonna be making up those hours during the rest of the week, um.
Except for Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, he won't be attending meetings.
Right, after-hours meetings, but we typically in June aren't meeting on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so it's, it's going to affect any other committees and commissions, and we can all talk about that relative to, um, whether we wanna do, uh, assignments this year, which we've gone back and forth on, liaison-type assignments, to try to cover some of the meetings. Park grant, so a few years ago, we finally updated our open space and rec plan. We are eligible for park grant as of last year, however, our eligibility came in so late that we missed the deadline for application last year, don't wanna miss it this year, it's coming up really fast, July eleventh. And if there is anyone that has ideas about where this money might best be spent, um, we should, you should let us know. The top-end, um, grants tend to be right around three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, these are significant grants. Sterling got one several years ago, did an amazing job with their park. One of the things when Joe Buckley came on that we told him about was Putnam Park.
Yes.
Which has been in a state of disrepair for quite some time, and then the ice storm really kinda did it in. It is hard for me to imagine that a grant that we wrote relative to Putnam Park, we found history going back to nineteen thirty-four, that money was expended by the town to make a swimming hole, um, especially with our three-hundredth coming up, that we wouldn't win that grant, I know I'm being wildly positive about that, um, but that's my personal choice. If the board has any ideas, please submit them fast, it's something that's gonna be fast-tracked with Mike, Joe.
Six acres there, right?
Yeah. Yep, uh, there were questions that were brought up by a resident relative to the ownership of it and whether or not there was a hundred-year lease that was about to expire. Initially, it seemed as if maybe it was in nineteen, in, uh, twenty thirty-four, um, but, and, and we should, we're gonna have Legal take a look at this. In Diane's research, she found that it appears to have been released. Yeah, but we actually found the history of the family and we, I think at this point, we're on to the great-grandchildren as far as the people that donated it initially to the town.
So do we need to authorize Mike and, so I'll make a motion that we authorize Mike Nicholson, TA, Director Joe Buckley, um, from DPW, and Director David George from Planning to be able to pursue and apply for the park grants on behalf of the town.
Thank you, do I have a second?
No.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you know, thank you, are you saying aye?
Yes.
You are, okay, good.
Can you remind us what PARC stands for? PRC, do you know?
P-A-R-C, I have to look that up, do you know? Rich, I know, I know, hold on, I should know it. Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities.
Thank you.
In our case, I don't see a situation where we would be acquiring new land, I would think we'd be renovating existing. All right, on to old business, uh, water sewer, hooray. So, um, we just received these documents earlier today, this is what was handed to you just before the meeting. And for everybody who's here, what we have are cover letters from the Abrams Group, highlighting what the process was to take us into town meeting, as well as a list of the emails that went back and forth between Abrams and DOR relative to preparing us for town meeting and the actions we took. Just to clarify what's happening right now, um, DOR is seeing some internal discussion where they are questioning their own advice to Abrams. They have asked for backup information from the town so that they can have their legal team make an opinion as well. It appears at this point that the actions taken at town meeting were appropriate. However, the expectation that we had relative to what we'd be able to do after town meeting has changed a bit. Uh, so what's going to happen is with the combination of the enterprise funds, the balances that were in those funds are reverting to general fund, and they're gonna have to get cycled through free cash and be certified as free cash, which means we will have to bring this to fall town meeting, reassign those funds which rightly belong to the water sewer users back into the new combined water sewer enterprise fund. Yeah.
Wow.
And interestingly, I, as far as we know, DOR was proactively contacted by a resident about the article. So, to get back to that, and Mr. Director Buckley, I have to put you on the spot again, but you probably, yeah. This was literally happening the day before town meeting, and, and the day of town meeting.
Nine o'clock, seven.
Yeah. So, which is why, and, and this is public record, Abrams has provided us with a, a list of all of the documentation that they had back and forth with DOR and the advice that they were given, and I, I would just wanna state, we asked, the town asked multiple times about this process and what was appropriate and correct, and we're told that it was. It's possible that we.
Sorry to interrupt you, on several occasions.
Yeah.
Plus, we had counsel look at it as well.
Yeah.
It was crossed, dotted.
Yeah.
Well, mostly, I mean, a lot of these responses are four days after town meeting.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I mean, they started in February because obviously when Director Buckley got here, he was fast-tracking, was fast-tracking the study as well as the options, so you know, we were all sitting here looking at the different rate, structure options, our six big pieces and what we were going to do and, uh, with the big bills that were coming in. So, as far as process tonight, um, I will be looking for approval, uh, for the following. For the town administrator and/or the chair, in the absence of the administrator this week, to respond to DOR's official request, which we have not received yet, but we were supposed to, but we didn't. Official request for in- information which may or may not include such information as our budgets and the text of the motion, which we have sent them, um, from town meeting. That information is ready and available, but we have not yet received formal notice of a request.
Make that motion for you.
Thank you.
Uh, motion for the, uh, TA to be able to respond to Department of, uh, DOR's official request for information as stated.
Second.
Can I just edit TA and/or the chair?
Thank you. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you, do you wanna recu- just, just say if you wanna abstain, just let me know. I don't, Skip never talked, he just, and I.
I turned it on, I said, no, you do it.
I, that's true, fair enough, when it was no. The, um, the second thing that we will be looking for is authorization for the town administrator, and if you could look further down in your packet, there is a letter that tonight is the first reading of the request going out to DCR, uh, for an extension on the treatment and transportation bills for the town of Rutland. And that is related to the fact that we will have to be going to fall town meeting or appropriate those funds back into the combined water sewer enterprise.
We hope.
Yes, yeah. Does anybody have any questions? Joe, do you wanna fill that out more, do you feel like that needs more?
The only clarification I would add is, um, there is some belief, now, keep in mind, DOR is, is a large group of both accountants and attorneys. And unfortunately, sometimes their opinions aren't always consistent. So there still remains some intent or some possibility that DOR will find a process or a method by which we can combine those funds or release those funds prior to town meeting. We did ask them to do that and it's being reviewed.
Nice. So you need, uh, authoriz- same authorization, TA or and/or the chair?
Uh, for this letter, this is first reading, so I would actually ask that the board take a, a look at it, put some thought into it and see if there's anything you'd like to add, subtract, comment on, and we'll actually approve this for, um, mailing out in next meeting. And just for the record, this is very straightforward, dear Director Carr, writing on behalf of the Rutland Board of Selectment to request an extension on the town's outstanding bills for the city of Worcester for transportation and treatment of wastewater for the twenty nineteen fiscal year. The town has approved a portion of the plan that our officials have suggested as a means to pay the higher-than-usual bills that we received. And while the town will, I see an edit there, um, will have an amount toward the total that it can currently afford, further action may be needed by later special town meeting in the fall. And that's getting CC'd to a long list.
Very nice, so you want a motion, right?
Uh, no, I actually don't, I, I'm hoping for a first reading tonight, and if people have things that they'd like to add to this letter, we'll, we'll review it next meeting.
Seems reasonable.
Does anybody have any questions about the DOR emails that you're looking at? And, and I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at them, so certainly we're, we're gonna be revisiting this a lot.
To the chair.
Yes.
Sorry, Jeff, did you want?
Nope.
Some of these emails regarding procedure and what was going on, a little bit confusing, in the sense where they occurred after town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Were we still waiting on clarification from DOR about the nature of this process prior to taking this to town meeting?
We are still waiting for clarification on the process after the actions at town meeting.
Actually, I want, do you mind if I jump?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
We hired a consultant who's been working for the town for a long time. And they hired, extremely the premier CPA firm in the state to do the rate study for us. That, that's the Abrams Group, they contacted DOR on our behalf, and a group within DOR said, you know what? What you wanna do makes perfect sense, go ahead, we checked with them a couple times, they said, yep, you're good, you go, go ahead. Out of the blue, a different group within DOR contacted us Friday before town meeting and said, no, you can't. So, a lot of the back and forth you see after town meeting is simply a result of the hot, us going to our, the high-power group we hired and saying, hey, what, what happened here? We paid you to get this done and make sure it was all right.
So then, just to clarify, to stop you for a second.
Does that, do you follow?
I do, but we went to town meeting without knowing that DOR was gonna be okay with this plan? We're hearing different things from DOR?
We're hearing different things from DOR.
No, we are, but just to clarify.
You just said prior to town meeting.
Prior to town meeting, the entire process was brought into question. We knew that we had the first piece of what was happening as the article on the town meeting floor, and, and I don't.
And we knew that that was okay to do?
Yes.
Through DOR communication?
Well, at that point, we were involving Director Buckley, Weston and Sampson, Abrams Group, our town accountant, Becky, I know you were looped in at some point with it, and our attorney.
But not DOR?
DOR was not directly available on Saturday.
We tried to reach out on them, but we got confirmation, communication from them late Friday afternoon and they closed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Believe, if, if where you're headed is, was there ever a question that we would have to make a motion for no action?
I'm not heading anywhere, I'm just asking questions.
No, I, no, I, well, sorry, jumping to a conclusion, if there was ever a question as to.
I think that's what got us in this problem in the first place.
As to whether or not we should make a motion for no action because something had gone horribly wrong and we were taking an action that in fact was going to be incorrect and illegal, then that's exactly what we would have done. We knew that the first part was going to be okay, the problem was all of the follow-up. And it, and it continues to be, we do not have a final answer today of what the process is. We know what we thought it was as of Friday night, and, and that has come into question.
Sorry, just to clarify, the front end, dissolving the funds and combining the funds, they gave that okay.
Yeah.
What's not clear is the back end or the process. Does it go to general fund, can you combine the funds right away, when we have access to that as free cash? That process is not clear, and that seems to be the sticking point between the two factions, for lack of a better description, within DOR. I hope that gives you some clarification.
Okay.
Honestly Mitch, it's a lot of data, we'll, you probably sit down with Joe and it's a lot. First, yes?
Through the chair, Mr. Buckley.
Chief?
Harry Sackman, Thirteenth Beach Drive. So if I'm understanding this, 'cause there was a little confusion, I was gonna ask a different question. So, we had both DORs, the entire DOR, to say it was okay to do this basically at a town meeting. We just didn't have the process of, after we approved it, how to do it okay.
Close.
Oh.
We had the process in place, according to the folks we talked to at DOR. DOR made a change last minute, that Friday afternoon, on the backside of the process, different people, a DOR.
But everybody was in agreement that it was okay for us to combine the funds.
Yes, yes.
So going to a town meeting for this didn't, wasn't inappropriate because we weren't waiting for an I or a P to be dotted?
No.
Okay, okay.
I'm assuming all this is in writing? I'm assuming all this is in writing?
Which part?
Well, everything, you had everything in place, you said. So is that in writing, and then some, another entity of DOR come out of nowhere? And so do we know, do they have vetoing power over the other entities of DOR?
I think we need to start talking about DOR like it's rivaling factions, it's a state entity and they should be acting cohesive.
Oh, they have their own little fight-ems inside the state agency.
Well, okay, so to answer your question, Louis, I'll tell you what, here's the one thing the town does not have with DOR, and, and lesson learned, and I'm giving too much personal information, but I have a, a sibling. personal information, but I have a sibling who is also a town accountant and longtime accountant in another community, and we had this discussion, as you can imagine, uh, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday, and, um, his response, and, and I can see where he was coming from, and we're having these discussions, was, who, you know, and there's, I'm sure there's plenty of blame to go around, but the fact is, the town did not have direct interactions with DOR. It was never assumed that we would. It was assumed that as part of this process, we were using a professional consulting company to be that go-between, because they have very, they're actually known for having a very good working relationship with DOR and would get us the answers that we needed. And so in retrospect, one of the things that we need to correct moving forward, and we have demanded it, is that any interaction with DOR comes straight to the town. And here's the irony of that, so we said that, we are waiting for a formal request for information from DOR that we have yet to get, and it's been a week.
Have you contacted either our state representative or our state senator, Ms. Goby, or Kim to do the lifting for us on this?
I have not personally talked to either of them about making a call to DOR.
Do you think either you as chairperson or, or our town administrator should be contacting that office, especially now, we have a Republican state rep and we have a Republican administration so, who I'm sure has the ear to the governor and the powers to be in those, in those, in those chair, chair, uh, secretary positions, that, uh, that she would have a better ear than say, if the governor was a Democrat. So what, we should be utilizing that by having her do some heavy lifting for us. And while she's doing that, ask her to find out about a sign. Why not?
If the board is comfortable, I can certainly reach out to Representative Ferson.
Please.
Okay, uh, moving forward, and just, will you correct me if I'm wrong, because I have my notes from the other meeting? The next pieces of this are that this board, as water sewer commissioners, need to take the next steps that we knew we would have to do after the, after the decision of town meeting, and to make a final decision regarding the rate structure coming up. Um, that is going to require a public hearing, and then another follow-up meeting of the water sewer commissioners, and, you know, time is of the essence here, um, how are people, people's calendars, if you were looking at June, um, we'd be talking about the 10th and the 24th, which are off nights for us.
I am undecided, un, I can't commit to the week of the 24th.
Okay.
Yet, I may be okay to do it, but I can't, I, and I probably won't know until the week before.
Okay. And, and Monday is not set in stone, so if people have issues, we can, we can move this around, we've done these on Thursdays as well. Now, our next regular meeting is the 3rd.
So my June, apart from that last week, I'm-
You're open.
I'm flexible.
Okay. I, I know we had multiple people-
Mondays are always good for me.
Mondays are always good, okay.
I'm fine, I'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mondays?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, um, unofficially, obviously unposted, I think the plan now will be moving forward to do June 10th as our public hearing of the water sewer commissioners for the rate structure for both water and sewer. My guess is we will add to that, um, agenda, further discussion about the DOR issue and discussion and steps moving forward relative to the enterprise funds and the outstanding bills for FY19. And then we'll be coming into June 24th, pending hearing from Leah, for a follow-up meeting of the water sewer commissioners to make the final decision about the rates. And that was what-
Time.
24th was one you couldn't make, yeah.
We couldn't do it at the 17th?
Uh, I can't be there the 17th, and I think Joe, there was somebody else that was unavailable on the 17th.
All right.
But we could move the day. Uh, we could do 6 or we could do 7. It's not a normal meeting night, so.
I'll be there, whatever.
Thoughts?
17.
Do you like, there's been discussions in past years about the whole 6 o'clock start time, if it's an off night for us, do you, would it be easier for you to start a little later? Do you want to start on, at 7, or do you want to keep it to 6?
Later, oh, I was gonna say, later's easier for me, but I'm in minority, so whatever works, works.
Okay.
I'm indifferent.
Indifferent, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're gonna cut it down the middle for, so we can have Leah?
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best to be here for 6, that's fine, I have it, you know, it's fine.
I think relative to people who are interested, who want to come as well, 6 o'clock is hard for commuters coming in who need to eat dinner and feed families and whatever, so if everybody's okay with making it 7, it's not a regular meeting of the board, it's not gonna be a full agenda, it's only gonna be this discussion, gives maybe more people time if they have public comment in regards to what our decisions are going to be. And we'll want to make sure that, uh, all of the documentation that we've gotten relative to the selections is made available publicly, um, in advance.
June 10th, 7 p.m.
June 10th, 7 p.m. will be our public hearing.
Here, the big room?
Uh, let's see what we can get, yeah. All right, moving on. Does anybody have anything?
We're still on Warren's show?
We are.
Oh, yes.
Do you have something to say?
Yes, please.
Come on up, or stay there.
Mike Sullivan, Crockett Road.
I'd just like to get a better understanding of this whole process and how we got to where we are and where we're going from here in regards to this allocation of money. As a, as a, uh, person whose family owns property that has only water, it's very concerning to me that the money that has been raised for water is now gonna go to pay for sewer. And, help me, and I don't, I don't want to rehash this whole thing, but in round numbers, am I correct that there's 700 and some odd thousand dollars in the water account? And the, and the past due invoices for sewer are 500 and something thousand dollars?
In total, it's gonna be that.
Okay, so how long has it taken us to get to 700 and something thousand dollars in water? How long has it taken us to save that?
About, without having the, the aging in front of me, about nine years of retained earnings, so this is monies in addition to the water rate that were not expended by the water budget.
Okay, and, and how long has it taken us to get 500 and some odd thousand dollars in debt in sewer? Okay, one year. So, how, first of all, how did we, how did that happen? How, how in God's name can we get 500,000 dollars in debt in an account? And I'll, first of all, A, either not know it's happening, but B, not do something about it, and, and I guess I'll wait for an answer to that.
I, I wish Dan were here, um, Dan Haynes, our accountant, explains this brilliantly. Our sewer-
You don't have to be brilliant with me.
Good, good thing. Our sewer account was doing really, really well. Back in 17, a- and I think I had said this earlier, we decided, because the sewer account was running similar to water, that we were gonna use the retained earnings from multiple years of, uh, you know, a nice lean budget to be put towards a capital project. So that's 325,000 dollars, that went to town meeting, we approved it. It was our process, it has been our process for quite some time to sort of save up for projects. And in some cases, as, as you know particularly well, for the really big projects, we still had to borrow. So for example, back in '08, we talked about borrowing for a five-year I&amp;I project. We're gonna have to do that again, we did it once in the interim as well. That depleted our free cash on the sewer side, however, based on history, we have always replenished it, it was gradual, but we have replenished it. We have typically raised rates about every three years, um, in the, in the past five, we actually raised them twice, um, and, you know, everybody tries to be as conservative as possible, and you raise them as much as you need to. In 17, for the first time, and when we get our last bill, uh, from Worcester, it's typically after the fiscal year has ended. We got our last bill, there wasn't enough money, so we had to go to fall town meeting and appropriate the money, and it was considered an exception. Skip, feel free to chime in. Last year, it happened again, and it was a little bit bigger this time, and we said we need to raise rates. We're going to do a rate study, and Gary had actually all that information ready for us. I still have the emails from Gary from back in early 2018 saying, we need to make a significant change. And the discussion with the people that were involved at the time was, we need to wait to get real data so that we can say to these rate payers, this is going to be a hit, this is, this is not a, right? Then, we have a gap, and the rate study didn't get done probably as fast as it should've. Joe Buckley comes on in January, Joe, again, jump in, correct me, wherever I, and he fast-tracked the rate study. In the interim, last, this past spring, summer, fall, we have had astronomical bills. And I know I took a hit when I said at town meeting that they were weather-related, but they were weather-related. And the other towns are seeing it as well. It put us in the, no pun intended, hole that we're in. The hole that we're in, the hole that we're in, relative to the sewer budget. There is no free cash, there's no retained earnings in the sewer budget enough to cover the bills that we are getting, which are beyond anything we've seen.
But how was it that, two years ago, we had an increase of whatever the number was, 300 and so, you know, a large increase, more than we could handle, we had to allocate money to do it. And then you saw it happening again this year, and yet we decided to do a rate study instead of saying, you know what, we've got another problem coming, we've got to raise the rates, and at the same time, let's do a rate study. I mean, i- i- it's unfair to the people who only pay for water to all of a sudden take their, their water retained earnings and say, you know what, we're gonna now pay sewer. Now, you know, any more than, you know, I'll use Seth because he's sitting here, and if the chief of police was sitting here, if, if Seth ran a deficit and the police ran, you know, w- would you just transfer money over and say, here Seth, take the police money because you don't have enough? Of course you wouldn't. I mean, it's, well, maybe you would, I don't know, but I mean, it's, it's ludicrous to think that we knew we had a problem, we allowed it to continue to happen, and we did a study instead of, look, I, I'm sympathetic to the sewer owners who, I, I think you said a 220% increase, whatever that number is, I'm sympathetic to that. But you know what? If that's what it is, if, if it costs me 220% more to heat my house, well, that's what I have to pay or I don't heat my house. And it's the same thing with the sewer payers, I mean, i- if the, the rates increase 220%, then their rates have to increase 220%.
So, and I know Mitch, you had something to add, I just want to address that one piece because it's separate. To reiterate, your concerns, in particular your concerns about the water-only users and the money that has been saved up from that side because the town was waiting to do a capital project specifically for water, I don't disagree with you, we need to deal with that from an accounting perspective on the other end, once the rates are set. We need to assign and say, not taking, but we have borrowed that money from retained earnings from water and it needs to be replenished.
So that's 700, excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah, we need to do that. And I would think that's gonna come up in the hearing at, on the 10th.
So that's 700,000 dollars is gonna be replenished?
Yeah, it's gonna have to be.
Okay, then, uh, my heartburn is, is much less.
I guess, to, to your point, uh, through the chair-
Yeah.
I would maybe ask Joe a question since he's here. Is, we had raised rates pretty regularly prior to conducting this rate study, and I can understand, making sure that number's correct when we, when you were to raise the rates, I'm just curious as to how we had raised the rates prior, what we were basing those, those raises on, if we didn't have a study guiding it.
On prior year bills.
On prior year bills, so we couldn't just do that this, this cycle, that would be different?
Yeah, that's my point exactly. If you did it on prior year bills last year, why didn't we do the same thing this year? And then, at the same time, do the rate study?
Because it wasn't anymore just about prior year bills, it also wasn't just about the treatment and transportation costs which have been going up rather exponentially, we had a couple of bad years.
I don't care what the reason for the increase is, the fact is, it's an increase that someone's gotta pay.
Yes, we could no longer base our rates purely on what last year's bills were. If anything explains and clarifies that, it's the bills that we just got. We couldn't have done it, and we would have done it wrong, and we would have had to have raised rates apparently twice, and I understand that what some people are saying is, well, then you should have raised them twice. I get what they're saying, I, and that's a, I guess that's a judgment call, and we're just gonna do everything we can now to correct this for the future. I can't, I really can't overstate, and I, I, please chime in, we could not have a better person in place right now down at DPW to help us through this, we really couldn't.
Well, I, I want to make it clear, I'm not throwing stones at you, and I'm certainly not throwing any stones at Joe. It, it's just troubling to me that we can allow a half a million dollars of unpaid bills to, to come in front of the town and not have a plan for it, other than to take it from somewhere else. That's, just doesn't, it's not fiscally responsible in my mind.
They were unanticipated.
Well, the, the number was unanticipated, it was 300 and something thousand dollars the year before, so you knew it was gonna be something, was gonna be something in excess of what you were allocating.
No, no, it, we spent 325 on a capital project, that's what depleted, that's what depleted our, our free cash in, in water sewer.
You will show-
We had, I don't know if you remember Skip, and I have them in another file, but I think the first year was 14,000 dollars, and it was, you know what, aberration, wetfall, we need to do this rate study, we've got some big changes coming, we knew we needed to make a change even in the way we do repairs, because we have another big I&amp;I, um, um, infrastructure project coming up, you know, a- and so, we knew we needed to take a look at the larger rate structure. Treatment and transportation and the costs that are coming out of Worcester is one part of it, and at this point, I, I mean, I'm gonna sit here and say it, barring professional guidance, I, I didn't, I wouldn't have known what to set the rates on.
Okay, bottom line is, rates aren't increasing to water users, and the 700 and some odd thousand dollars is gonna be reimbursed.
We need to talk about it, but the water commissioners, I hope that's where we head, I hope that's the vote that we get, yeah, yeah.
So do I.
I mean, I can't speak, right? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to back up, it's very interesting because I'm on the sewer.
Yeah.
You said that over the last two years, we've been billed, is it by the plant in Milbury or we build by the city of Worcester?
City of Worcester.
City of Worcester's building, now, when I was a selectman, back 13 years ago when I got off the board, there were some issues with Worcester, and they were working on those projects, and as far as I know, they completed those projects. So where do they get the moxie to all of a sudden increase the amount of, 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 of money that we have to pay? Uh, are they, are they in the middle of new projects down there? And, and in those days, back when I, uh, back then, we brought the, uh, DPW commissioner from Worcester out to speak to us. We had a very nice discussion with him, he was a pretty decent guy, I don't know who's there now, but this guy was a pretty decent guy. So, if they're pulling this stuff with us again, we, we understood it was legitimate back then, because I saw the projects being worked on in Worcester, I actually visibly saw them when I took a ride, went down to see what was happening. Okay? And you're saying other towns, why are we getting the towns together and saying to Worcester, bullshit to you, excuse me, television, BS to you Worcester, and get our state reps and state senators and other people involved in this? That's highway robbery. They're putting a gun to our head.
Yeah. Um, they're hea- heavily involved.
And it's not, and, and it's because we're putting extra water through because of the rain?
Well, that's part of it, absolutely.
Because we're not sending more waste material down.
I think we're, we're conflating a lot of issues here that I think are independently, are independent of each other, that contribute to the same problem, and I think that each one of those issues may warrant a discussion.
We should take an aggressive attack on Worcester, that's BS. I understood 13 years ago, I saw the problem, I visibly went down and I watched them doing the sewer work. Is that what they're telling you again, that there's sewer work in Worcester?
No, eh, so to Mitch's point, so, there were three large projects going on in Worcester, uh, we had an unsigned sewer use agreement with them, we were taken to court over the last water sewer moratorium, if you remember, and the city of Worcester was-
Yeah, I, I was involved, is that the one I was involved in?
Right, but then you left and I was the one going to court in Worcester, and, um, the city of Worcester was uninterested in having a discussion about signing that agreement or having any conversation with us at all, until they got their three projects done, and Joe can certainly speak to those, like Newton Square, right? And I can't remember the names, the other two.
Yes, yeah.
It took-
Those are more, those are more volume.
Those were more volume.
Actually, cost.
No, but it, to Louis' point about the, uh, court case, that's what held up our sewer use agreement, and the issues we were having with capacity at that time. That's separate today, except for the fact that we are now at the end of the sewer use agreement we finally signed. It expires in twenty-twenty, so to your point, about being held hostage, and about the Worcester rates being out of our control, we're now gonna have an opportunity, for the first time in a long time, to renegotiate our sewer use agreement with Worcester.
Well, let me tell you, Ed Augustus, who's the city manager of Worcester, is one of the most decent men I've ever met in my life. I've known him since he was a young man, who was on the school committee of Worcester. He's a terrific guy. I think if the town of Rutland, and other towns, who are being held hostage by whomever in the city of Worcester, if you folks sent a delegation to have a conversation with him, his ears would be wide open. And I think you might, I'm not promising anything, but I think you might be able to, at least, have a, an, an open and honest discussion with him, whether it'll get him to, to, to move the city in the direction it should run, but it's worth the effort. It's worth the effort, he's a great guy, and someone that would certainly sit down, and I'd be surprised if he said no, to you. So I would please ask, that you do that with the other communities. And if you would like me to contact, uh, Ed, I'd be more than happy to try to set up a meeting, when you're ready for that meeting. He's a great guy, and hopefully, something will come of it. This is ridiculous, I could understand it thirteen years ago. But if those projects are done, then that should be done.
Uh, just as, as an example, and I don't know where it stands today, I would have no reason to, but Holden has an ongoing lawsuit with the city of Worcester, over sewer rates. They never signed the agreement. Actually, was it Westboyle, no, it was Holden, Holden never signed the agreement, and there is an, an active lawsuit that continues, I think we're up to five years.
But, there's other ways to skin the capizite of lawsuit, because you can drag it out.
Yep.
Any smart groups will drag it, drag it, drag it, and you'll be in court till, until, you know, thirty years from now. I'll be long gone, and, but you can sit down and have dialogue, and try to make reason, with a reasonable man. And the reasonable man is Ed Augustus, I know that for a fact.
Joe, did you wanna respond first, or, I think he's leaving, I think he's done.
None, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you, anyway.
To the chair, I mean, can we just have Joe speak about some, because I think there's some confusion as to the contributing factors of this, because we've heard a lot of different things. Maybe, Joe, if you don't mind clearing up, some of the confusion around some of these issues?
Uh, before you do, do you wanna finish up, or do you wanna stay there?
Well, I, I guess I just have, no, I don't wanna stay here, I have a couple more thoughts, you know? So, we're basically gonna exhaust, theoretically, both of these funds. And there was, oh, we're gonna exhaust the water fund to pay for the sewer fund. And if I remember right, was there not a major project in the quote-unquote Calario district, to do that, redo all that, is that still? Is that still happening?
We still have an enormous amount of infrastructure work to do, yes.
So is that gonna happen this year?
This year? No.
It's not gonna happen this year. Because wasn't it originally supposed to happen this year?
Even with that nine years' worth of savings, we did not have enough money for that project, we were still gonna have to borrow, for the size of that project.
Okay, so, that money's now gone, so that project is now getting pushed back, I, I'm being presumptuous here.
No, I, I, in all fairness, when we proposed the plan with all the rate changes and, and adjustments and combining funds, we did propose a capital plan, which includes that neighborhood. There are five-year plans for both water and sewer, um, they do include borrowing to keep the rates in check. But by means of example, the Clorio neighborhood couldn't be done in one year. Um, and it's two-point-four million, we had maybe six-hundred thousand in our pockets to throw at. It's, it's a much bigger project than I think we can fund in this manner.
Okay, but, so that's been backburned, basically?
No, uh, again, it goes right into the rate structure, it hasn't been, it's on the, it's on the radar, it's in design right now.
Okay.
It's not gonna get done in one year, it, it's probably gonna be a couple of years to get that project entire done, that's involved.
So it's probably, but it's probably not gonna start for another year?
Probably not, no.
Okay. And then, secondly, what happens if we have a major water issue? You know, whatever, we, we blow the main water line, and it costs more than we have to fix it? We have to go borrow the money now? So the water it uses will pay to borrow money, instead of using the money they had?
But we always did, we were always borrowing for capital projects to a point. At the same time, we were trying to save within the rate structure, from retained earnings, right? They, they were running very lean departments, which is fantastic, and saving a little tiny bit each year with this idea that you could throw a, a chunk of money at the start of a big capital project, but we, we've always borrowed for the big projects, always.
All right, I said it at the town meeting, you're Robin Peter to pick Paul, and that's just wrong, wrong, wrong to me. Again, I mean no disrespect to the sewer users, but I, you know, I, I should, I should come to you folks and ask for help, when I need to update my sources, my septic system to Title V. I mean, what the heck, we're, we're using my water money to fix the sewer lines, why not?
So, so can I, before you get down, step down, this is good for us. What information, and in what format, would help you, as a water-only user, get clarification, and, and some peace, in what's happening?
Let me give it some thought, and I'll
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, now I'm gonna step over the line, under public comment, I forgot to mention. Look at the Worcester Business Journal. Um, we were, we were, the RDIC, at the, um, initiative of our town planner.
I saw it.
Um, Dave George, uh, lined up an interview with us, for, uh, a story on Rutland Knights Hospital. And it's, if you look at your website, it's there, and it's, I think it's well-done, and I apologize for forgetting to talk about it earlier, or doing it now.
No, I wanna let Joe talk last, just that way, every question, hopefully, I mean, maybe not every question, Harry.
Yeah, Chairman. I don't have a dog in this fight, really, I am both water and sewer. But I do believe the water and sewer users of this town need to be comfortable knowing that the board has a plan that will pay the money back into the water, so they can feel it's their money, and not take nine years to do it. And also, understand the rates that the sewer will have to pay for, in order to get it back, so they need to understand what the rates are gonna be. I think those two pieces, it's important for the board to focus on, to give peace to this town, and to the water and sewer users. 'Cause I don't have, like I said, it doesn't matter to me. If my water goes to sewer, I'm okay, but, but the people who have that problem, that division, need to be at peace, and they need to know that the board has a plan, and that, whether it comes up, whether you express it at a meeting, or whether you do it at a fall meeting at the town, but let them know something, so they can be at peace. That's all I would like to see, as a citizen of the town.
When you asked me for what would it take to satisfy, I think I said that earlier, but I couldn't agree with Harry more. You know, I mean, if I were Harry, I would care less about this too, because, you know, we're helping you not raise your sewer rate. If I were you, I'd, you know, it didn't surprise me at all, when we get passed at the town meeting, who, who in their right mind would vote against it? Only, only people like me.
So, so just for reference, so just for reference, the, the largest version of the plan that was submitted to us, which was, what, twenty-four pages, Joe, something like that? It's very dense, it was released to anyone who wanted to see it, back in March. Now that said, I don't expect a water sewer user to come in and say, give me their report, they can if they want to. Um, at that point, we were narrowing down our options, and essentially checking off the steps, and, and one of those first steps was, was town meeting. And, you know, Joe really fast-tracked this, when he came on in, in January. That's not an excuse, that's just to say, to your point about making sure we get everybody the information they need, even up till now, it was still in a kind of a raw state, it, it would be a lot, which is not to say we shouldn't provide it, but it's, it's a lot.
And again, I, I'm, I don't wanna focus on the past. If there's a lot of heartache, a lot of damage that's been done, I don't wanna focus there. But going forward, we need to know, I need to know as a sewer rate, is my rate gonna go up five-hundred bucks a year, in order to pay back the water account? Or is it gonna take, like a thirty-year, like a forty-year loan for the fire station, or the library that we've done, to pay it back? There has to be some, some reality there, for what the citizens need to know, and it, it can't take two years to do this. It has to be done in a short period of time.
Yep.
That's all I'm saying.
We could sell the motorcycle.
So, how do we make sure this doesn't happen again, or, or ongoing?
Well, I think, if I may, going, we need to, as a board, need to be more proactive in saying, hey, your rates are gonna go up. There's nothing, that we're, we're being as responsible as we possibly can, but this is not something that we can just, that we have a whole, whole lot of control in. Obviously, renegotiating our, our waters, our agreements with Worcester, and everything will help, hopefully. But, it's, I think we just need to have that out there, that you're on water and sewer, and your rates are going to go up, because the town's costs are continuing to go up, and it's not responsible for us, as a board, to try to keep your bills low, when in the long, long term, it's gonna come back to bite us, which is, I think, what has happened in the past five years or so. I think that there's been hesitation to raise rates, in a sense of, you know, we have some retained earnings, we can do this, it's okay, we don't wanna raise rates, when taxes are still going up, and this and that, and now, it's come to a, a head, and biting us in the butt, and I think we need to be more proactive, and just, it's reality.
I think, to Harry and, and Mike, in particular, what you're saying, and I always look at Skip, every time he's here, I'll probably look to him, but relative to the way we ran water sewer for the past nine years, and even before that, with Carl Christensen, the industry has changed, and I think we're now looking at managing this entire department, a new way. And it, it kinda gets back to the study, that needed to be done, it needed to show us what the next five years are gonna look like, and what needs to be done. Um, and how to revisit the way we bill, and what a bill looks like, and what's included in it. Uh, it's, it's gonna be different moving forward, there's no question.
And I think, in the past five, ten years, our sewer system has changed drastically, right? We have a lot more pump stations going in, that are okay right now, but they're mechanical pieces, that down the road, might not be okay. And so we need to make sure that we're being proactive on that side also, so.
Chairman, uh, Bruce Michael. What would you say, I mean, we've been looking at sewer rates, but if we put four-hundred more houses in town, what effect does that have on the sewer rate? Do we need to keep, every time you put a hundred houses in, do we need to increase rates? Is there a proportional, I mean, I don't know what the study shows, but we can't say, we're gonna increase rates to dollars, when we've got a four-hundred users for the sewer line. That's what I'm trying to get at, is there, is that what we're looking at, too?
I think, Joe, how did you determine the rate raises, when you worked for the city of Worcester, that Worcester uses? Because they raise pretty, pretty frequently, those rates.
I wouldn't have been involved in rate, setting the rates for the city. That wouldn't have been under my purview.
Right.
But do you know what it, what it was based on, at all, or?
Yeah, there, there, all that information is given to us when they set the rate, the out-of-town rate, we get to see everything they use to set their rates. That's all public knowledge, and it shipped with these, the letter from DCR, giving us the proposed out-of-town rate. It's based on their entire budget.
I guess not, not picking on you, Joe, I don't mean to do that, but I'm looking forward now, and yes, we met, passed this managed growth, that says we're only gonna put thirty-eight more homes a year, or permits, but that's still thirty-eight on the sewer system. It's still thirty-eight on the water system. It's still thirty-eight homes on the road system, that DPW has to take care of, salt, everything else. So on the sewer, if we know those homes are going in, proactively, I would say, we need to consider, if it's gonna cost us more, and I don't know if it will, that that be a component of our rates, going forward, so, I'm not, I'm not putting all this money into the sewer that I'm putting in, and then having rates be cheaper later on, because we have more houses, I mean, I don't wanna pay for somebody else going forward, for they're using sewer, okay? You know what I mean?
Well, it's a good question for the moratorium, which is expiring this month, on what is the impact of thirty, thirty-six permits, uh, if we were allowed a thirty-six permits to hook up the sewer?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, and, and the data we have now, is that we are at or over capacity, in the outgoing sewer, already, so, I mean, so there's more issues, so your, your question was, you know, what is the cost? Well, you would have to have more infrastructure in there, if you're gonna take all that volume with the four-hundred houses, uh, and so on, and so on, and so on, so.
Harry, I think the simple answer is, that a, a new sewer user will pay for their own treatment and transportation, 'cause that's how it's gonna get billed, and, and we're done. Um, I think where we get complicated, is what's getting touched on, which is, we have developed, over the past X number of years, a complex system for a town our size, and we have parts of our system that, because of our geography, are more complex than maybe another town would be. So when we take on, right, what Leah said, yet another pump station, maintaining that type of system is very different from maintaining the original gravity-fed systems of the older neighborhoods. On the other hand, the original gravity-fed systems of the old neighborhoods are aging. Every time we see a water sewer main break, we realize that every day. Some of our original work that we had done, we were just talking about this, nineteen ninety-one, has now aged out of its repair cycle, and needs to be repaired again. Uh, and so the bigger our system gets, and the more complex, the more expensive it is to maintain, so that's, setting that aside from treatment and transportation.
So, fit to this question,
Yeah.
I don't think necessarily that, uh, new houses construction or connections from new houses would be in the rate. That's in the connection cost upfront.
And that money, you know, you, you build that into the connection cost. In theory, if you're tying into our system, a portion of that money has to go towards system maintenance and, um, stability. In addition to that, if it's new pipe in a subdivision, that goes back to quality control, and that does, to a sense, fall to us, as long as the pipe has been put in properly, and, and it meets all of our standards, we should be all right. Um, so I don't think that would necessarily affect rates up or down.
Okay. As a last thought, and I'm gonna put myself as the chair of the CIPC. Part of what we try to do, is go forward five, well, we've actually gone out ten years to look at some things. So part of it is, what do we have to be aware of? More houses, older infrastructure on sewers, new lines going in, what do we have to be aware of? Do we need new equipment, new trucks? So if the money isn't there in the sewer, it makes even our job difficult. 'Cause now we have to say, we can't afford this thing, or we gotta borrow, so we try to use that. So, having adequate sewer and water rates helps us see out into the future, as to what we need to make the town run effectively. And that's how, I, I say, yeah, if it has to go up five-hundred, two-hundred, a hun- I don't know, but we need to replenish that money, and then move it over to the water, what they need. Be fair to them, that's what I was looking.
And, if I may, I think that that's part of the reason for wanting to do the rate study, was, we can know, the system's so much more complex now, and it's getting more complex, and we need to be able to have that, that broader view, and to take all these pieces into consideration, and not just look at the previous year, the previous quarter's bills, and say, this is the trajectory we're on, so this is what we're gonna raise rates to, it needs to be a much more comprehensive, deeper, multi-level view, so.
If I could just jump in?
Yeah.
We prepared two capital plans, one for water, one for sewer, as part of the rate study. We also prepared two options, or our consultant prepared two options. If you wanna do capital improvements and pay for them out of pocket, what would your rate look like? If you wanna do capital improvements and borrow money, what would your rate look like? Those have been presented to the board, um, they were reviewed a couple times, and we suggested that we borrow, only because it keeps rates in control. But still accomplishes things like the Clorio neighborhood, the I and I work that has to be done to get our rates, keep them stable. Those, they are in draft form, I think they've gone to CIPC, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So let me understand, if I can. Rates are not gonna go up then, 'cause we're gonna borrow money?
No, rates have to go up a portion, I can't get around that, there's just no way around, what it means is, so if, 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 you know, would your rate go up, um, after July one, ten percent, if we borrow money to do capital improvements?
Yeah.
Maybe. If you don't borrow money, and you still commit to do that capital work, like in Clorio, or do the I I work, your rate may go up forty percent.
Okay.
But, those are your two options, we went with the lower one, and bor- suggested borrowing the money to do capital.
Okay.
Okay?
Just, just one last comment, I, I'll make it very brief.
I don't think it even got to Mitch's request, yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, he, he wanted Joe to give kind of a big, broad overview, and I don't, we may have touched on a lot of it, but I don't know if it was in the format you were ideally looking for.
My other comment is, you said that, you know, things are gonna be managed differently, and the intimation is that that's gonna make things a lot better, and I expect it will. But the fact still remains, when a problem arises, when you see you're in the red, management, managing the process better isn't gonna help, someone's gonna raise the flag and say, we got a problem, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it now. My roof's leaking, I gotta fix it. Okay, I'm done.
Um, Mitch, I'm about to send you the rate study. Um, Mitch, I'm about to send you the rate study so that you can review it. You might wanna sit down with Joe at some point, prior to the tenth. I mean, everybody can, maybe. Um, how much do you want him to go over tonight in terms of more of a, a big picture? Cause I, you know, to your point.
I think that's fine. I, I just think, you know, my question is, you know, if we had raised the rates earlier, would we be in this situation as much as we are? I know that weather played a factor. And I'm just concerned about the process of this conversation and we're, we're combining issues that are not intrinsically linked to each other. Um, I think that the rate issue was separate from some of these other things and I, I guess my question to Joe would be, I know that we, we commissioned a study to study the rates. Communities raise rates annually without commissioning a study. And a lot of what Worcester based their sewer rates on are anticipated costs. So I'm just concerned that we needed a study to conduct what should be a normal facet of kind of our business. Is this something that could've been prevented if we had raised the rates in a more regular manner earlier?
Well, I guess, my first question is, what issues or what aspects of the conversation do you think don't fall into the discussion? And I think I need to clarify that first.
Mm-hmm.
Before I could answer your question as to whether raising rates earlier would've made this not happen or not. So what particular aspects do you think may don't, don't belong in the discussion?
No, I think we need to view the, the aspects that contributed to this as separate, separate issues versus, you know, we're hearing that the reasons for this are because of XYZ and XYZ when it's a combination of these things. Um, and I guess my question is, regarding the rate structure, if we had raised the rates in a more consistent manner or in a more timely manner, what would be the deficit we're in now versus what we are currently witnessing? Or is that, I mean, why did we need a study to determine what the rate should have been or what they're going to be in the future? I'm just trying to wrap my head around why other communities can raise the rates without having to go through this process and they don't find themselves in this situation. Does that make sense?
Not really.
No?
I'm having trouble following butchered.
I mean, can I just, can I just put this out there? So elephant in the room, Mitch is saying it, Mike is saying it. Who, who are we supposed to blame? Isn't the blame, the blame is right here. Why didn't we raise the rates? Would we still be in a deficit? Most likely, because these bills were astronomical and we never would've raised the rates at the level of the bills that we're seeing. Would've been quite as bad? Nope. Nope. Should we have, yeah, I'm looking at the first email and the Weston Sampson original proposal for the water and sewer rate study was February sixteenth, twenty eighteen. So if you are looking for a mea culpa, here it is. Uh, we should've done something different. Hindsight. Well, of, of course, February sixteenth, twenty eighteen was the first discussion of a rate study in order to have, eighteen, eighteen, in order to have a long-term discussion about what we're finally getting to, which is a long-term plan for how to pay for both TNT and repairs and I and I. And, and you know what? The only, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but blame these two, we're the only ones left. And, and, and let's go from there. If that's what everybody's looking for, here it is.
I still sense the look backwards.
But we all are. We're all looking for somebody to blame, so blame the two that are left. We are the water sewer commissioners.
If you think I'm looking for someone to blame, I'm not. What I'm looking for is to make sure it doesn't happen again and how do we, how do we, how do we resolve the current problem of the money issue? And secondly, how do we, how do we ensure that it doesn't happen again?
That's exactly what we've got. We have a very good plan ahead of us to correct this within five years without significantly and negatively affecting every single rate payer. This was the best of a lot of bad options in front of us.
To answer your, the other question, I, I don't think you, there, I, as an engineer, I don't think you could really predict the volume of flow you had last fall. I, I don't think you could've predicted that out far enough to put that into a rate. I, I really don't. For every one gallon we built, we collected funds for, we got built for three and a half. And, and that's on a curve that you, you can't necessarily adjust for. So even if you would raise rates twenty percent, you'd still be in the same hole. Do, do you understand what I'm?
Okay.
On top of that, the rate structure itself, using retained earnings to do capital work. Now, the DEP work that the chair was referencing to do the work with Weston Sampson, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, they had to do that work to be compliant with DEP regulation. I, I, the other option would've been to do a loaner. It would've been one or the other. So you would've had that money on hand, but you still would've had to borrow to do it because DEP wanted the work done. I, I don't think that, I, again, I, I've described it more than, more than once as a perfect storm. Yes, rates should've been raised probably two years ago, but there's no way, I don't think you could A, predict how much rain we were gonna have and how, how, what effect that was gonna, was gonna have on the system. And B, I don't, I don't think you had enough retained earnings on hand to cover capital expenses that you had no choice but you had to do. I hope that answers your question.
Great.
Thank you.
But Sheila, you just said something that I find troubling, that you're worried about negatively affecting the rate users. I'm paraphrasing what you said. And, I mean, sure, I, if I were you, I wouldn't wanna raise rates either, but the fact remains, if the rates are going up and the users are using, they gotta pay the piper. And you, I, I don't think it's fair to say, I don't wanna negatively affect the rate user. It is what it is.
Every discussion we have up at this table is an effort to try to keep costs down, whether that was for a regular tax base or whether that was for the water and sewer users. We've been running really lean for a really long time and it caught up with us. It caught up with us on the town level. It clearly caught up with us on the water sewer level. So to try to twist that around as, well, politically, you, you just, you wanted to stay, you know, you didn't wanna be unpopular, that's not why we were doing it. And by the way, it's why we're taking the hit now for this harder option. Because raising rates on people who we are hearing every day are at their limit when it comes to their everyday costs, whether it's their tax bill or their groceries or whatever, we're trying to mitigate that for them. So this is in front of us, a messy maybe and complicated, best of a lot of bad options. And, and to sit there and say, and I, I feel like that got twisted a little bit, we're trying to impact them and make this as least painful, no matter what, it's gonna be painful as possible. We had the exact same discussion, we were setting the tax rate, I think Skip, was it two years ago? When because of revals, our lower valued, val- uh, lower-valued houses, so say the older stock, some of the, the ranches in town, had seen an astronomical hike in their valuation. And we knew it was going to adversely affect the, the people who were least likely to be able to absorb it easily. And, and there's not much you can do, but you still have the conversation. And we're in that, we're in that spot now because a lot of our water and sewer users are not necessarily the people in the new developments, they're the people in the older developments who are on fixed incomes. So for us not to have that conversation and say, oh, well, gotta raise the rates again, up they go. I, I, I'm not gonna be that way personally, but again, you got two of us left, where.
Well, if you think I'm twisting things, you're, you're completely misunderstanding my point. You know me better than that. I don't twist anything. I, I tell you what I think. And I'm, I'm just saying, if the rates have to increase, no matter how painful it is, sure, you wanna make it as minimal and realistic as an increase as it can be, but it has to be what it has to be. Plain and simple. So if that's twisting things, I don't see it.
Do you, do you think that, uh, the select board should be the Water and Sewer Commission? Should it be another lower level? Coming back to the select board, having charge of it? You, you've got a lot on your plate.
Sounds pretty good right now.
I, I'll be interested to hear Mitch's perspective on this as somebody who's coming in brand new. It's very hard thinking about having another group come in that you have to solicit for, for all of the boards and committees that we do struggle to fill sometimes. And what that looks like when the people who come in who have a very specific interest. Now, in the best case scenario, you get people who are like Joe Buckley, right? They're engineers and they're... In the worst case scenario, you get people for whom it's a personal issue, right? And so, a- and the data is so heavy at this point and so dense. And whatever, none of us went to school to be, to, to do this, so you, you learn the data. I honestly don't know. I don't know if we would be better off splitting this off.
Or, or hiring, you know, engineer and who knows whatever it might take to run a, a water and sewer.
Right.
Your town is growing, the, the town is growing.
We just, I mean, we just caught the flak for hiring consultants of us, so.
That's what money.
Yeah. So anyways, it's just something that, in my opinion, you know, the town is growing and you need professionalism and there's a lot on your plate right now. You should be, uh, other places probably. And, uh, it's something I think in the future that you people, as I see in your, you know, list of things to do, your goals and objectives. Put some thought behind it though, I think in, in the future. It may not be just right now, but I, I, I really do feel that as this town is growing, no matter if it's slow or fast,
I don't wanna put you in, do you want to put on goals and objectives? Do you wanna make a comment? Do you wanna?
I just, I think, we can certainly talk about it. I think it's, it's, um, it would just depend on how it's structured, I think, which is what you were alluding to as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
It has been tossed around in the past.
A lot, a lot. Can I move on?
Yes.
Please.
Please. I'm moving on to Moses Howe Day. Thank you cards.
Yay, something pleasant.
Yeah, you have, um, you have a small pile, no, you don't, I have the pile of, um, thank you letters. Uh, if the board so, is so willing, uh, could we get a motion to allow members of the board, whoever would like to, to sign, uh, how many are there?
Um, well, there's at least nine.
Girl Scouts, cadets, fire brigade.
Just give a synopsis of what these are.
Sure.
So Moses Howe was a, uh, we, we did a nice memorial dedication, yeah.
Very well done.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
In conjunction with the National Peace Officer Memorial Day, May fifteenth, uh, of this year. So it was a nice opportunity to recognize that occasion. And also coincided with the parabulation project we had been doing, uh, this spring with the scouts. Uh, we had about eighty-five people in attendance, I believe was the count, lasted about an hour. Uh, a lot of different participants in there, but there was some move, a lot of, uh, people who made it a pleasant event that it was. And I wanted to recognize them to, uh, at the very least, a thank you letter from the town. Um, Randy Jordan, who, uh, who provided all the, the seats, the chairs. Uh, Tommy Ruchala and the Fire Brigade, who provided the speaker system, the podium, uh, the different Girl Scout entities, uh, the different troops, the packs, Meg Ryan, Lori Becker, the Cadet Troop, uh, three oh eight six two, the Pine Hill Daisies. The Boy Scouts, two different troops, one forty-one and three oh six, who handled all the flag work. The Wolf Pack, one forty-one, who did the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance and the Scout Oats. Uh, we had Sergeant Troy Chauvin, who, who did his bagpipes. Um, all of these things cost the town zero. It's, it's just a nice touch. Uh, who played, so Troy played the pipes. And then we had our historians, Dan Suhaki and the Wachusett Mountain Men. These are, uh, a couple, a couple of guys from the Leamish Sportsman's Club that came out and dressed in period garb. They usually do colonial and I asked if we could do something that was pre-colonial and they, they did that for us. So, uh, I hope it wasn't lost in the crowd, uh, what they did. And they also brought the, the period armory, which was, uh, the flint locks. As you can see, the, the different efforts to try to get the flint lock loaded in there. Yeah, yeah. So they tried to keep it to the period. I thought that was great. Dan's a local, local, uh, guy in Wood Road. Uh, has been doing this for a long time, so I wanted to get a, a letter to them. I also burned some, um, some photos for, for them. I had a nice photo of the Wachusett Mountain Men in there, so I'd like to hand that in with the thank you letter. The Rutland Historical Society, they, they had been partners all along in this. Sheila Judkins and Carolyn Seaman. They did the, the background work for Moses Howe himself and they were, they were very pleasant to work with. Chaplain Brian Stidson, uh, chaplain of the Fire Brigade, uh, came out to do the invocation and the benediction. And, uh, last but not least, our public safety dispatcher, Sheila Crosby, came out and did a splendid, an awesome rendition of the National Anthem for us. So I thought that was very, very nice. So just looking for, uh, board signatures on that to, uh, to send out on official letterhead. Please.
Can I get a motion assigned?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, apparently that was just a breather. We're going right into old business and, uh, the next thing, the Development Rate Limitation Bylaw follow-up. I really just wanted to see if the board, um, had any questions about process moving forward, how we can support the planner, building inspector, um, through any of the questions, which obviously have come up in the past week or so and, and they're getting answered as they come up.
I guess my question was, what's, what's our next phase here? It goes to the AG for ratification?
Yes, however, and I gave bad information to a couple of people, I think we were under the impression that the AG would, w- the AG's approval was required for activation.
But it's retroactive.
But it's retroactive.
Because of the zoning bylaw.
Right.
And, uh, so it, it could be, well, I have not been able to put the packet together since I have to finish.
The minutes and other things. But technically, the clerk's office has thirty days from the town meeting to put the packet and get it to the AG. Then the AG has ninety days to respond. And there are only three people in Worcester who cover the whole state and it's town meeting time. So we can expect it to take that ninety days. So we're probably looking at at least a hundred to a hundred and five or six days. Once the AG gets back to us, then our office has to post notices in town, which depending on what day of the week happens, it's usually within a couple of days. At that point, it's retroactive back to town meeting date. And the opposite is true, or not opposite, but like a general bylaw is just, uh, it's only effective on the posting date. So it doesn't go back. So it's that, like, more than a hundred days of gray area. Which makes it difficult for.
I think when you asked me off the cuff, I said six weeks, so there's the real answer.
Pardon?
I think I had said, somebody asked me sort of off the cuff and I said, oh, my idea's six weeks, and that's, that's, no. Okay. So with it being retroactive, how does that work for?
That's been the discussion with, with Will and the building inspector's office. Because, you know, I, I don't know what he, whether he's, I think he's talked to, to Mike and to Sheila about, you know, which way you go, you know, you just, you just keep giving in to him and then at, at the applicant's peril if.
Yeah, he, he's having conversations with Dave as well. Um, I, and again, I think this is a process for all of us, so he's certainly had questions come up. We're trying to answer them as they come. Um, he did say to me this afternoon that he hasn't had any applications for building permits. I think he saw a wave of them come in before this, uh, and so, you know, maybe at least in the short term, everybody's been holding pattern to see what happens on your end.
But this timeline is nothing new. It's, I mean, we have changed zoning bylaws all the time and when we get the notices, we send them out and let people know the, the timeline. Perhaps it should've been written into the bylaw with a different effective date, cause you can't do that, so.
Well, just call them all back.
Good to know.
Are you any questions? No, we need to, okay. Uh, under new business, the board has an appointment list. This is just for your review tonight. So Mitch, our process has been typically waiting to hear back from the various people about whether or not they are interested.
Before we appoint them?
Before we reappoint. We also post every single vacancy, whether it's a re-equipment or not, um, on a main page of available positions. Uh, and then, you know, a lot of these, they're not highly competitive. Obviously, we're happy to see people who are willing to serve. Um, in a few cases, we've had multiple applications and we'll review them. In some cases, we ask, we ask people to come in and have a discussion with us. Um, we can take a look at the process if you have ideas about how it goes. Um, typically, most of these, uh, with a few exceptions, are July one appointments. So we usually do it in midweek.
Do we, do we have letters of interest, uh, the list of them?
So the, the document in front of you has a, a column that says whether or not they applied for reappointment. It's a little bit early in the process because the notices just went out, so we've only heard from a few.
I was talking about, uh,
Oh, sorry.
New letters of interest for
So our, our office is gonna maintain a file, um, and I think when we decide what meetings we'd like to review all of these, all of that information will get released. So the cover letter, whether they include a resume or.
So before, before we move forward on any reappointments, we'll know who else might be interested in serving?
Yeah, and we've always done it that way. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And I know in last year, we got a little bit of pushback because as new members on the board, Jeff and I had a couple of questions of people who were being reappointed and we just asked them to come in. Is there a way that as we get notices of people who are either new applicants or looking for reap- reapplication, if there's questions that we can ask them to come in without a predisposition that it's negative? Because I think last year, it was kind of, whoa, why, all of a sudden, and it was more just, there were two new people on the board last year, and, again, we haven't seen a lot of these people who are expiring. Jeff and I and Mitch is new this year too, so.
Right, right.
Well, certainly with the, with the new requests, people from the outside looking up, coming out of board, we have absolutely the right to ask, ask question. Depending, especially on the, uh, depending on the, uh, the council or commission that they're looking to get on, I think it's reasonable for us to, to ask where you're coming from.
Okay.
I mean.
But I'm just asking if we can do that, and I know it's going out to TV, but just if we can do that, can, we do that and not have pushback automatically with the assumption that it's a negative thing? That it's really just genuine.
I think the answer is no. We found that last year, yeah. The answer is no, so we, maybe we should just do it with the new people.
Right, but.
I think you've just, you've just said it, but.
Right.
People can believe what they wanna believe.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you wanna put any thought into a change in how we handle it? We do now have a majority of new members, right? That was their first time last year, and it was definitely throw them in the deep end, and, yeah, it, it comes up fast. And, and, yeah, I would say most of them, you know, you're happy to see people serving. Um, I think to your point, it's the question of singling people out. I think it's kind of an all or nothing.
Yeah.
You know, you wanna bring in all the new people? Okay. You wanna bring in everybody?
No, I don't know, I don't know that it's all or nothing.
Okay, I don't know if we have time for that. Okay.
I mean, if you have somebody who wants to be on the, you know, the, you know, the Cemetery Park Commission and things like that, I think it's different than.
You're okay.
Zoning Board of Appeal, so, I mean, you might wanna have somebody with a background in.
Okay.
So, I think it's relevant, uh, the Veterans Agent, I mean, we're trying to find a Veterans Agent, it'd be nice to know somebody who has that background, right?
Yeah. Mr. Clark.
Leroy Clark, Glenwood Road. What happened to the open positions that are on the board that people left and you and the, the board never filled?
So with Mitch coming on and with Mike away this week?
No, 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 no. Going back six weeks ago, five weeks ago. There was opens, openings, and I use Conservation Commission for one.
Mm-hmm.
There's been an opening there for, what, a year?
Roughly.
Pretty close to a year. And I know somebody put in for it to fill, finish that term.
Mm-hmm.
You wouldn't, they don't do that anymore, they don't look at open seats?
From now till July? Two months?
They gotta get three, I don't know what the term is, but if it's two years, you're not gonna, you can't appoint the guy for three when it's only two.
Twenty twenty.
Well, okay, so when would, when did the application come in for your example?
Six weeks ago.
You applied six weeks ago?
Four to six weeks ago, a letter was sent to the board of selectmen.
I'll contest to that, being a member of the CONCOM.
I'm sorry?
I tell, I'll contest to that. We had a, one of our members wrote a letter asking for the appointment, for Skip to be appointed. It was submitted to the.
Okay.
Board of Selectmen.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Well, no, so Skip, did you, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot here. Did you submit it with the idea that you were not looking to be on CONCOM until after your term was up?
No, I said, I did all the legal document with Anita to make sure that there would be no conflict of interest and all that good stuff.
So.
Did I not, my dear?
Yes, you did.
So why didn't you ask to have it put on the agenda? I, I.
I'm not the chair. I, this, I assume this is the job of the chair and the town administrator.
I think I, I apologize. I think I was under the assumption that you were waiting until the end of your term. I had no idea you'd filed for an immediate, that you wanted to run concurrently.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I apologize. Um, so the board, at this point, has an option, we're, we're thirty days in now, so we've got all the appointments in front of us. Um, we can't take action on it tonight, because it's not on the agenda specifically, but, uh, we can take action at the next meeting, as opposed to waiting for everybody else if we want.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
I would like to see any, any letter of interest come forward. I don't, where do they go? I mean, to the TA?
Yeah, they would've gone to Mike's office.
So are there other people who are interested in different things? I mean, I heard.
Okay.
Uh, at least one of the other commissions, somebody's, you know, not interested, and so there's, I would like to see a compiled list of.
If I under.
Who do we have?
Can I ask for clarification for Skip?
Yeah.
If I understand, I'm just looking at the Conservation Commission, there's two that are expiring, but there's one term that's vacant. And, and you were looking at the vacant, so potentially.
I was looking at the vacant. There is, people get sick, other people work out of town, they can't make the meeting. I've been to several meetings where they've been very, very fortunate. They had to pick up the phone and call somebody, even sick or not, to come to the meeting, so they had a majority, so they could do certain items that they had to do for buildings and all. So, I mean, that's why they need the full, the full board.
So I guess I'm just looking for our list, for any place that's vacant, we could potentially not have to, vacant versus expiring, we could potentially hire or appoint immediately.
Well, that's what we did with, uh, Melissa last year, right?
Yeah, versus. Right.
I did the same thing on CIPC.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you came in on CIPC like that, right?
Yep. Oh, right.
It'd be a year and two months.
Yep.
Um, and, and does something go out to, to all the volunteers who are expiring?
Mm-hmm.
Something goes out to them, say, hey, you're expiring, are you still interested?
Yes. Yes.
And is there a deadline for their response?
Uh, Sean, did you get your?
No.
Nothing, nothing yet? Okay.
But, uh, I thought usually what, um, 'cause I've been on it for three terms now, for nine years. Uh, make, uh, make a motion to the chair, to our, I mean, to CONCOM's chair.
Mm-hmm.
To say, hey, I would like to re-up, and then the process goes taken from that, so, and then it's, I believe it's through the meeting, through a CONCOM meeting, you know, there's a motion to accept Sean's, um, you know, wanting to re-up, and then it's, you know, it's decided within the CONCOM first.
Mm-hmm.
If I may, Peter Crane, Nate's way, the, um, the process varies from board to board, but in general, the notification of expiring terms goes to the chair of the board, who then deals with whatever process. On earth books, for example, I just hold up one-on-one with the person, making sure that person is still interested, or people, and then, as necessary, write an appropriate letter to the board. CONCOM does it a little differently, but there, it's the basic process of you make sure someone wants to stay on the board, and you follow a pro, a, a letter to the board to.
Yep.
To indicate that, that the, the interest in continuing to serve.
Yeah, the council on aging is similar. They'll send a letter from the board with a vote, um, and, and support, and then we've had a few that it's the person, individual, who just sends the letter of interest, and the chair isn't quite as involved, so, yeah. Yep.
Yes.
Now that you mentioned, um, council on aging, remember when they, when the bylaw went through last year and there's a question?
Yes.
So at some point, you need to take a look at the number of full members and set the quorum rate for the year again before, before July four, so just.
Well, that's the one that, that's the one that started the full, right?
One, two, three, four, five. Right now, they're at seven, with two vacant alternate positions.
Yeah, and, and that's, the bylaw got changed and it was.
Right, to make it a little easier.
Needs to get fixed, but for now, you need to, every year, vote for, to set the quorum, so.
Okay.
And they do have more full members right now than they normally do.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
Historical Commission, it's.
Non-existent, sadly.
Yeah, it went extinct. Very sad.
Which is ironic.
Really is.
Historic Commission does extinct.
Well, the Historical Society has weathered, you know, some changes and things, and it's, it's still going well, and I think the Historic Commission just sort of, it was attrition, and then, and then we lost.
Sadly, like, the last three have passed away, so.
Yeah.
Is there a limit on, I mean, are all these to the limit, so if you have, uh, seven names down there, it's a seven-member board?
Um, I think historical is unlimited, I'm not sure.
Constables?
It might be seven.
Is there a limit on constable?
They generally have three, but I don't know if there's a limit.
I don't think there's a limit for constables. We had more, I think we had more.
Generally, one is called.
Mm-hmm. Um, if the board has any process suggestions that they wanna follow, could you send that directly to Mike? Um, and we'll make sure that all of the notifications either did or about to go out to all the chairs, um, make sure we get the process rolling. And then, I would think, as far as the appointments, we'd probably be looking at our last, well.
You waited too long last year, that was, that was a legitimate beef.
We did, yeah. Well, I, yeah, I don't know that we have any options. It might have to be June seventeenth, which is our last meeting in June, so halfway through the month.
Can we get?
Last regular meeting.
The info prior to that?
What's that?
Get all the info, letters of intent, letters of interest.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to, yep. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Goals and objectives. So you are looking at the final version, it was in your packet, of the goals and objectives from last year. And we have all kinds of options, and I'm gonna roll this into, um, on your agenda, goals and objectives is broken down, so, uh, these are the board's goals and objectives. We also need to do town administrator, town planner, director of public works, because when they started, we were in the midst of just, right, a little bit of chaos. Um, I, it was suggested, and if the board is comfortable, that the, these department heads take first pass at creation of a document for themselves, relative to what they've now seen and gotten accustomed to within their departments, and then present that to us, and we go from there, or to Mike in the case of, of Joe and Dave. Are you comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, as far as s- board goes, do we wanna do something similar to last year, which Mitch, we, um, we posted a meeting, um, kind of not in this room, but, uh, we were actually up at the Wood Studio, and we had kind of a work group session to pull this together. At the time, we had, um, our interim, we had Bob Reed with us, who was kind of seeing us through the, the process then, uh, and it just kind of led us all to lunch a little bit, and. I think we had sandwiches.
I mean, I found it beneficial as far as being new to the board and just kind of having a bigger overview of everything that the board kind of does and has goals, like, wants to accomplish throughout the year. Um. I found it to be beneficial, but.
Would you like to try that again? Would, would you want it on an off night? I think, do we do it on a Saturday? No, I think it was a.
We definitely, I don't think we did it on a weeknight, but.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I guess, 'cause it, yeah, that's on.
Yes and yes.
Okay, here, sorry to put, yes and yes, to which? Yes to which?
Give you two questions.
I don't remember.
Should we do it again?
Okay, okay.
And should we do it on an off night? Yes.
Okay.
I feel like our on nights are really busy between now, I mean, unless we're gonna look to July or some, you know, to do more, uh, to do BOS, goals and objectives. I feel like we kind of have to do an on and off thing.
Okay.
Well, the water should be lightened up a little bit.
Feel free to throw out some dates. Anybody wanna pick a night? We can suck this up. And then what we'll suggest to everybody is to submit goals and objectives. Um, they'll be collated into a master document, and we'll have a discussion. So everybody will get a column, and we'll see where.
Just like last year?
Yep, see where people intersect, see where we have some common goals.
You gonna send something out, a template?
So, I don't wanna, so, I'm sorry. I can do whatever you want. We can work off this, so we can set a blank. What do you want?
Work off this.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm just looking, I don't know, FinCom usually meets on Thursday nights, but I don't, I know we were able to, for a few FinCom meetings, at least have everyone show up at FinCom meetings. So I'm wondering, is Thursday night a viable night? I don't know.
Okay. Thursday?
It's fine, I mean, tell me, okay, that's a full meeting.
Really?
Uh, CIPC meets on Thursdays, but.
Every Thursday or?
No, it's, uh, usually third, I think third Thursday once.
Third Thursday, so you just had one?
Yeah, we're coming up in, uh, June.
So we're looking at May thirtieth or June sixth?
The sixth. This.
Yeah.
Just, uh, Mitch, fine.
The sixth?
Sixth is fine.
Sixth. If anybody ends up with a conflict, let's just, you know. June sixth or?
What time will we start?
When you wanna start.
I mean, seven, but I don't wanna, that's me. I can, if it's.
I think that's fine.
That's fine.
If earlier's better than.
Seven, six, whatever.
Seven, seven PM, June sixth, okay.
And where is it gonna be?
You guys wanna try the Wood Studio again, if it's available?
It was, it was nice having just a space, a circle space that we could sit around rather than, and kind of talk to everyone.
That was nice. That was nice. What do we call this?
Retreat. Wood Studio. Retreat and goals setting, I suppose.
So that's where your retreat's gonna be, at the Wood House?
Did you come to the last one? I think you were away.
No, he came.
That's right.
You were there.
That was the night we met Bob.
Oh, I was in there.
Yeah.
You were there. No.
It was our first night that Bob came and re.
So this is, are we reopening up this, the, this is a public meeting?
Yeah, it's posted.
Well, it's a posted meeting, and we can do whatever we want, so some of the other boards locally, um, make a, a request that the, that the meeting is allowed to be as sort of natural as possible, and, and that the cameras aren't there. However, you can't demand it, so, but it's meant to be a workgroup meeting, we won't be making any decisions, so, yes, we will still post it though.
Seven PM.
Seven PM.
Hey, I'll be there.
All right. Anybody, anything else? I'm moving on. Uh, under new business, uh, number double oh seven, we actually reviewed already as part of the water sewer discussion, so that was the DCR, City of Worcester, um, bill payment extension. Uh, next, we have resignations that need to be accepted, or at least addressed. Uh, so for the first one, um, we have a resignation of Mr. Ed Purcell as a trustee from the Library Board of Trustees, uh, effective May tenth, twenty nineteen. Uh, he filed it on May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, and his resignation was required because he has just joined the Finance Committee. We are not the appointing authority. Uh, he's elected, so this was just to acknowledge.
How long had he, had he been on the, uh, Library Board of Trustees?
It's joint. Do we still need to make a motion to accept the resignation?
Oh, yeah, no, you, you did that. I thought you meant to appoint somebody new.
Oh. Oh, no, we'll do that next. Oh, yes. So could I have a motion to accept Mr. Purcell's resignation?
So, move.
With regret.
Second. With regret. Do we know how long he had been on the library?
Long time.
He took Ted Purcell, he took one year off.
How many years?
Year ago, but I would say he's probably been on more than a dozen.
Yeah.
Send him a thank you letter?
Well, he's still with us, thank goodness, he's on FinCom. Second one, um, we, oh, I'm sorry, did we vote?
We don't, I don't think he voted.
Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, second one, we had a resignation of Rachel Dolan from the School Committee, effective May fourteenth, twenty nineteen. And, accepted, or did the School Committee need to accept it?
You, you need to accept.
We still need it, aren't we?
Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the resignation of Rachel Dolan from the School Committee.
Second, but can I just, has, and I know for Ed or Ted, we kind of know that it's because he was asked to join FinCom. We had asked in the past for any feedback from anybody that's resigning from boards or commissions, just as like, do we have, I, I mean.
That backfire on us too.
Well, no, I, I just want, before you answer, as an elected official.
Oh.
She does not need to answer. She doesn't answer to us, so.
No, okay.
Right.
Yep, okay.
And, and I don't think I included a copy of her resignation, but it was very short, it was three.
Okay.
So it just resigned effective.
Okay.
Uh, she's been on about, I think, a year, she, she ran for, you know, she did a write-in, I think, campaign a year ago, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Correct.
So now we have two elected positions that need to be filled, so, and that's a joint effort between you and then the other boards of the School Committee.
Thanks, Anita.
So I had a motion.
I second.
Second, thank her for her service. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna be.
Yeah, that's a tough thankless job, the School Committee.
Oh, yeah.
So we do not appoint, we only ratify the appointment by the moderator of the Finance Committee members. Somebody make a motion based. Somebody make a motion based on the blue double oh eight letter you have with a list of names, and their term expiring.
There's one or two of the terms that are different than what Randy announced at the meeting, so if you could read the name and the term.
You're gonna correct it?
Randy and I went over.
Okay.
If you have what I passed on, I go.
I'll say it, and I'll let somebody else make the motion. For Ted, twenty twenty-two. For Peter O'Malley, twenty twenty-two. For Dave Lucier, twenty twenty-one. And for Carol Martins, twenty twenty.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the board ratify the, uh, FinCon, Financial Committee appointments made at the annual town meeting on May eleventh, twenty nineteen, by Town Moderator Randy Jordan, as follows. Edward Purcell with a term expiring twenty twenty-two. Carol Martins with a term expiring twenty twenty. Peter O'Malley with a term expiring twenty twenty-two. And David Lucier with a term expiring twenty twenty-one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Great. All right, back to fun things.
Hey.
Proclamation of Ralph Anderson Day.
Um, do we have that?
We do.
Right on.
We do.
So I had, um, generated the, the interest in this. Uh, Ralph Anderson, uh, forty years of service to our community, fifteen years of which as a police chief, and, uh, he was recognized, uh, this past week during the memorial service for being one of the firsts in there. But another milestone that's coming up is his eightieth birthday, and he's having a big celebration, or they are having a big celebration for him on June first at the Sportsman's Club. So I, uh, was, I requested that we issue a resolution or a proclamation to, uh, present to him on, uh, June first at the, uh, celebration. But I also asked that we name a town, name a day after him, uh, which would be his birthday two days later on June third. So the proclamation here is requesting that June third be declared, June third, twenty nineteen, be declared Ralph Anderson Day in the town of Rutland. So, seeking a motion and approval.
You can make that motion.
I make a motion that, uh, the town recognize and declare June third, two thousand nineteen, to be Ralph Anderson, uh, Junior Day in the town of Rutland, and that the board, uh, sign the proclamation to be presented to him at his birthday celebration at the Sportsman's Club, June first.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you.
And I'll be happy to present same, uh, if anybody wants to come with.
Oh, yeah, I'll try to make it. All right, next time capsule, perambulation. Oh, dear.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, this is a, uh, the finale of the perambulation project, which we had been working on, uh, with the scouts. Perambulation is a five-year, uh, every five years, the select boards or their designee are to actually perambulate the perimeter of the town, or to recognize the cornerstones, uh, in the town. We have up to thirty-four of such stones, uh, at least in the records, in the archives of the town hall in there. So we've done our best, the troops have been out there doing their best to, uh, try to identify the cornerstones. I have some pictures I wanted to share with the board in there. We went out this weekend with the Pine Hill Daisies on the Oakham side. Take a look at that, share that. And, uh, we had a lot of fun finding the stones and then putting in the, the year. So at the end, we wanna finish this up on, uh, June second. And the finale, well, the, let me back it up a little bit. So we had many partners. We have, obviously, have the board, we've had the Historical Society, so the aspect of the Historical Society was kind of, uh, uh, the finale for that was kind of with the Moses Howe Memorial Dedication. The part of this project with our scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Cub Scouts, the two different packs in there, is gonna come to an end on June second. And, uh, we were originally going to do it at Treasure Valley. And the plan was to, uh, bury a time capsule at the final stone, which is a three-town stone inside Treasure Valley, but some feedback recently from Treasure Valley, they were concerned about the location of the stone, because it is kind of close to one of their access roads, it wouldn't be guaranteed that fifty years it would remain untouched, et cetera, et cetera. So we had asked that we go back to the Historical Society and see if they would be interested in having the time capsule buried on Historical Society grounds, which requires board approval, because it is town property in there. They did vote, and they unanimously, uh, approved to have the capsule, uh, put on behind the Woods Building if the board was, were to, uh, okay that, the use of town property to, to bury. So, so the plan was that this would be a fifty-year capsule, and, uh, with that, the scouts are to write a letter to themselves fifty years down the road. The Historical Society and the Council of Aging, uh, also participating in the project, are writing letters down to their descendants, and with, those would be received by no later than June second to be put into the capsule, along with a couple of items of interest, uh, in there. So on that same, same note, I am also asking that the major boards and the commissions of the town, if you wanted to participate in there, write a letter to the, to your descendants. So, for Conservation Commission, uh, to write a letter to the Concom of two, the year two thousand and sixty-nine on what your expectations would be of them. And, uh, on the same note, for our board, for each board member, or the, the chair, or representative of the board, to write a letter to the Board of Selectmen of two thousand and sixty-nine on where we're coming from, what's important in this, in this day, two thousand and nineteen, uh, and what we expect of them. So. This, uh, falls in line with the historical aspect of the perambulation project, part of it which you saw at the Moses Howe in there. So it's a fun part. If, uh, any member of the community wanted to, uh, address a letter to your descendants, um, you may do so. Put it in a sealed envelope, nobody will read it, it'll go into this capsule right here. And I wanted to thank, uh, Director Buckley from the D P W of making the prototype here for this here, uh, tube. It's a six-inch PVC sewer rate, grade rate unit here with the, uh, two airtight end caps. And once they go on there, I tried to adjust it in there. Once it goes on there, it does not get adjusted in there, so. But thank you, Joe, for, uh, giving us this. Uh, the, the Girl Scouts of the Pine Hill.
Yeah, I was gonna say that our, our sewer pipes are gold.
No, they are not gold, but this one, we made gold. And, uh, fun fact for you. So they had, uh, four designated locations on the Oakham line. One of them was in the prison camps on the White Hall Road. So we went down to the White Hall Road, and we were surprised, one of the photos with them, put the thumbs down. Somebody had already tagged it, and that was one of the, uh, the scout troops had already hit that, but, because it also falls on, uh, like a three-town rock. So. So they already tagged it, so they were a little disappointed that they only got to paint three of the stones. I said, well, you know what, we're gonna break out the capsule, and you guys will be able to put the tag on the capsule that will be buried, and then we signed it, so. So if any of the board members or anybody here wanted to, uh, put their John Hancock on there, I got some, uh, some colored Sharpie markers. You are most, most welcome to, uh, to sign it, and I would open that up to anybody here if you wanted to, uh, but with a heavy emphasis that if you wanted to drop a letter, please give some thought to that. And, uh, could you bring that back to your boards, your individual boards? And if you had something, um, expectations, would love to see that and put it in there, so. And if you had anything else that was interesting, overlook farm, I mean, we have, uh, something going on. I mean, this is a, this is a year of change, two thousand and nineteen. Maybe give us something from overlooking, yeah. Not of value, but of, of importance.
So I, I should, uh, tell Norm Anderson, our chair.
Yeah.
Who was on the original two thousand master plan, talking about having the Maple Ave extend right across the street, take out Woods Studio, and come around.
If you do that, you're gonna have to move this.
Then you'll have to move that.
Yeah.
So I'll tell him, you know, it's, it's out, that's out. No more.
Yeah, uh.
This is very nice.
It's nice, it's nicer to have more control. I mean, they started to push back a little bit, the Treasure Valley, and it's, you know, it's, it's fine.
It's private property.
It's fine, you know. Uh, we get it. So, uh, so what I would be looking for is permission to, uh, be able to bury this on the Woods property, uh, in the backyard of, of the Historical Society, and I would, that's the official business.
Did, did you say you have permission from the Historical Society?
Yes, they voted.
Okay.
But they recognize that it is town property, and it's gonna require our board's, uh, permission.
Okay. Anybody have any comments?
Who's burying it?
Um. The scouts, us, whoever's, whoever brings the shovel, I guess. Um, we were originally gonna, I mean, this took a, took a quick twist. We were gonna do it at Treasure Valley, and they were gonna come with the bobcat and, you know, dig a nice hole in there. So, uh, yeah, this will, this will require some shovel work in there. Uh, June second is the day of the bottle can drive, so it's gonna coincide right next to it. I'm gonna bring some, uh, some hot dogs, hamburgers, and drinks, and, uh, anybody's welcome to come by, so, uh, us and the Historical Society and the scouts will, will burn some hot dogs and we'll dig a hole. It doesn't have to be that deep, just has to be out of the way.
Okay.
You know, just like burying a small pet.
Oh, dear. Is that really what we wanna?
Yeah.
End this? Okay.
Yep. Couple feet down, maybe. It'll be good to go.
Okay.
Put some coins in there, Dick, right? So you hit it with the metal detector.
Uh, okay. Could I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to let Jeff bury this thing.
Second.
Fantastic. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One abstention.
Thank you. If anybody would like to sign it, uh, I'm gonna put some pens up here.
All right.
After the meeting.
I'm, I'm moving forward. Ready? Under correspondence, um, I'm hoping that you all had a chance to take a look at this. However, we have some time to make a decision if you didn't. So the United States Census is coming up in twenty twenty, and all local, state, and tribal governments have been invited, if they like, to participate in a new construction program, which means essentially it's a little bit like early voter registration before year eighteen. Um, so we would be allowed to provide the Census Bureau a residential address list with living quarters for which construction is in progress but not yet complete, all the way up to the point where completion expected by Census Day, which is April one, twenty twenty. They have no plan to send out materials to registered participants until September. Um, however, we need to respond. Um, actually, didn't, uh, before June fourteen. So if you would like to put some thought into this, we can absolutely move it to the yes.
This is about the third, um, plan ever since it started.
Yeah.
I think, uh, our office participated in the first two that started in twenty seventeen.
Okay.
The first one was block boundaries.
Okay.
And that was a mapping, new roads. So then the next one, we did last year, and it was L U C A through the Census Bureau.
Oh.
And it did go through, I think I remember Skip signing something to give, um, me and Diane and the assessor's office the authority to do that.
Okay.
And that was basically the up, L U C A is the update of local census addresses.
Okay.
So this is the third phase, and so it's a, it's a worthy phase to do.
Is that why you stayed here until quarter to nine?
No, I.
Oh, okay. So I'm gonna apologize to you.
Oh, no, no, no. I was gonna send a memo, but I didn't. But anyway, it's a worthwhile thing to do, and, and I think, um, we've done the others without a plan or without D I S, but.
Okay. So I'm assuming based on the reading of this that it will require Will Castaneda's input as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do you?
It's volunteer, but it's, it's a worthwhile program, so.
I mean, do you find it's going, do you anticipate it to add a lot to your or Will's workload, or?
I think so.
Okay. I mean, if you've done the other two, it sounds like.
Yep. And, and the, the Secretary of, of the Commonwealth's Office has really encouraged us to do the other ones and to keep, 'cause a complete census count is, is pretty important.
Yeah. And these programs are really important in terms of accessing funding.
There's another one, and I believe a letter came into your board that I, it's, um, something called the Complete Count Committee. I don't know if that's.
I haven't seen that.
Yes. But I'm not so sure. That's, I think, for a bigger community, that might be worthwhile. It, um, brings together community leaders, um, religious leaders with, with local government. But I think we're a small enough community that, that we know where, you know, where people are and how to get them on the count, so.
Okay. We can take action on it tonight, and?
Motion to allow us to move forward this process.
So participation in the new construction program.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Do we need to provide authorization to the chair or, and/or T A, and/or town clerk, and/or building inspector?
Yes, please.
So included.
Thank you. Uh.
Yep.
Who seconded that?
Stillings.
And you were okay with that? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right.
Thanks, Anita.
It is time to rework. I would entertain any motions. Mitch, we've done it all kinds of ways. We've done it one by one. We've done it as a slate. We've done it, whatever.
Um.
We've done it as its own meeting, the Tuesday after Election Day.
Get this out of your face here.
Oh, dear.
Is anybody interested in any particular new assignment this upcoming year? Wayne?
Not particularly.
Can I say what my thoughts are?
And then I'll say mine.
Oh, dear.
Go ahead. No, sir, go ahead.
You're first.
My thoughts are, if, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Uh, I think Sheila's done a good job. We'll continue, I myself, speaking for myself, continuing to learn from her. I think I need to continue to learn, uh, from you. Um, comfortable with the current setup in there, and, uh, I would, I would, uh, my position is that I would like to see Sheila continue as, as chair. Unless somebody else wanted to do it, I wanna hear. Yeah, me and Leah like, ew.
I finally feel like my feet are almost under me.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
It's becoming a little bit more comfortable, but, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, everything's directed right to Sheila. She, if there's anyone who's, who's teaching, it's, it's Benio. And I need that.
My turn?
Sure.
All right. So I'll, I'll just repeat what you said.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I'll make a motion, uh, that we, uh, appoint, name, whatever, Sheila Dev, Chairman of the Board, uh, for the next, next year.
I'd like to second that.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you.
Do my best.
I just wanted to record that I vote nay.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's three ayes, one nay, one abstention. All right, on to vice.
Wayne, your vice. You wanna try it? You wanna stay? You wanna?
I'll accept it.
Uh.
If you want.
It's up to you. I mean, if you wanted a break, I'd be happy to, to. I'd, I, I could do it, too.
I have one year left on my term. I'd be glad to.
Let's just keep it. We'll keep it as is.
That's fine.
Yep. And I'd, uh, make the motion for Wayne, unless anybody else was interested. Wayne, okay. I'd make the motion to, uh, maintain Wayne Walker as our vice chair.
I'll second that. Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And one abstention, so three, one, one. And for clerk.
Now, that's one, one I'm happy to share with somebody else. Uh, I think Leah, you should have wrote a first refusal if you wanted to do that, otherwise tradition is for junior member, uh. It just, it just, uh, involves signing of the little white cards and, uh.
About a hundred and twenty, I mean.
Be the scribe as needed, but, I mean, I'm happy to, uh, give, I'd, I'd love to see. Leah, do it. What do you say?
I can take it, for sure.
I'd, I'd make a motion that Leah be our, uh, new clerk. Leah Whitman.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
I just wanna thank the audience. There was a lot of good discussion and conversation tonight, and I think it's nice to kind of have you guys here and keep us looking at things from a different perspective, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Come on and sign the, can sign the tube here. The, the girls named it.
All right. Can I get a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The it pipe.